Board member Deirdre Brown.
Here.
Board member Elizabeth Callahan. Board president Nubia Dibal Wilson.
Here.
Board member Regina Eckert.
Here.
Board member Bill Gifford. Board member Bimal Kapadia.
Here.
Board member Will Meyer.
Here.
Board member Shana Zaka-Gable.
Here.
All right, we have a call.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, man, it's gotta be a fun night. I don't really... Wait, what? Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: That written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 2:30 PM on January 3rd, 2025. Thus, said notice was sent via email to Maplewood and South Orange Township clerks and the editors of The News Record, Star Ledger, Tap into Soma, and The Village Green. And now, we will have a presentation on the Seth Boyden stepping program.
Maureen took time out of her busy schedule to share the work that her school has been doing. And to be very honest with you, I didn't think somebody else owned those ears because I have the same one. That's amazing.
This is Grace. Grace is here to support me. Grace is a third grader at Seth Boyden. Go Bulldogs, right, Grace? Okay. I'm incredibly proud to introduce Seth Boyden's fifth consecutive residency in African-American stepping. This by far our biggest residency yet. In addition to our usual 20 days of workshops and PD days, which were again co-funded by New Jersey Council on the Arts and by young audiences of New Jersey and Eastern Pennsylvania, Seth Boyden added extra rehearsal days with our beloved resident stepping artist Maxine Lyle, which were funded by Seth Boyden PTA, the Achieve Foundation, and the South Orange Maplewood School District. Thank you. Shannon and I would also like to take this moment to thank Dr. Allison Poe, whose support for this residency has been exceptional. The end products were two world premiere performances of Maxine's original and we hope Broadway-bound theater piece Step Show the Musical in junior review version, featuring our whole fourth grade and self-selecting fifth graders. At the second show, Seth Boyden received the tremendous honor of a Governor's Award in Arts Education from Governor Phil Murphy, presented in person by the Executive Director of Arts Ed New Jersey. This award honors Seth Boyden's achievements over the course of half a decade in teaching our student body about African-American stepping and its rich cultural history. I would also like to note that Seth Boyden recently received a second Governor's Award this past weekend for our students' efforts in volunteerism centered around our composting adventures, our composting at lunchtime. We are so proud of our community. I'm delighted now to introduce the short film about this year's residency created by cinematography professor and Seth Boyden alumni parent Anthony Artis. Please enjoy this fantastic reflection on Seth Boyden's preparations for and performances of Step Show the Musical Junior Review. Thank you.
Step Show the Musical is a junior adaptation, if you will, of a larger project that has been my life's work. It's a musical that incorporates step as the primary form of movement.
It's a relatively new part of our culture around here, but it feels like it's just become part of who we are. It's part of the fabric of Seth Boyden at this point, that somewhere in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, we do stepping.
We wanted something that was more culturally competent. We wanted something that brought some diversity. We wanted something that was different and engaging for the children. And so, you know, with the tremendous help of the PTA and Dr. Poe, this program came to be.
I like how stepping, it like, it helps me express myself and I can perform to help other people enjoy it.
Five, six, seven, eight.
They are just so like joyful to be part of it and to do it. And, you know, I think also just to see like a variety of students up on the stage just makes it, you know, that stepping's not just one type of way. It's multiple ways and that anybody can do it and can grow from it.
But you can turn your head to them and say, "My name is Avery." Okay? Go ahead.
My name is Avery.
So, at the beginning of stepping, I was really interested in it because in past years of going to school, I had seen other kids do it and I was really excited to learn.
I would say in third grade, when I first heard about stepping, I was like, "What is this? I don't really know what this is." But once I started doing it, I remembered there was so much joy in...
It's more than just, just dancing. It's kind of like, it's kind of like powers. It makes you feel like you're powerful.
Because like when we like make beats together and like synchronize or in unison, it like sounds really good and I enjoy it a lot.
I think it's gonna be very fun and I'm excited for more people to see our steps. And I think that Ms. Maxine is very proud of us going into it.
Ms. Maxine is really kind and she like helps all of us a lot with step. Like if we mess up, she just like keeps helping us. She makes us brave and confident to keep going.
Ms. Maxine is my step teacher. She is very awesome, amazing, absolutely 10 out of 10.
Give him a minute.
We begin with a breakdown that goes...
All right, do it again, do it again.
We begin with a breakdown that goes...
With a... So, I'm gonna try now. We begin with a breakdown that goes... Right, again, one more time. We begin with a breakdown that goes...
A lot of them, the ones that were even shy in the classroom and you see them on stage performing and that, that confidence is carried into the classroom. It's carried into even the ones that didn't think that they would do well at the beginning or who struggled at the beginning. And by the end, oh my God, they have really owned that step and they feel good about it. They enjoy it.
I'm most proud of how far we've come in like stepping at the beginning of the year. We weren't, we were like just learning the steps and now we're like basically experts at the steps. We can be professionals.
Five, six, seven, eight.
Other cultures need to learn about other cultures as well. It can't not be a single cultured school or a single cultured community. And I think the more you learn about others, the more you understand others. And with that understanding comes tolerance.
They wanted to express their feelings through body movements.
Very good. Tell me more.
There are nine major African-American matronies and sororities. There are all the five nine.
Students have been so inspiring to watch as they've taken on this work because it's a tall order to ask students this age to step, sing, and have lines all at the same time. So to watch these young people rise to the occasion has just moved my heart truly.
That was amazing. Thank you. It's so inspiring to see that every year. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, great. So next we, I'm gonna motion to go to exec session. So I'd like to make a motion to enter exec session at 6:44 PM to discuss attorney-client matters, personnel, and HIPAA reporting. The length of the executive session is estimated to be anywhere from 30 to... Oh, sorry. My phone's going off. No. 30 to 75 minutes. And after which, the public meeting of the board shall reconvene. May I have a second? Thank you, Board member Eckert. All in favor? Great, so let's go.
Okay, hi everyone. We are now back in regular session. Good evening, thanks everyone for joining tonight. It looks like we don't have any student public speaks. Our first VP was just checking. We are being mindful of our amount of public speaks tonight. And just as a heads up, because we are over 20, we will have public speak be two minutes, not three minutes tonight. So I'm going to hand it over to our superintendent. Bing.
Oh, perfect timing, Dr. Gilbert. Can't run away, Dr. Gilbert. Carrie's right here. I want to welcome up Dr. Gilbert and Dr. Carrie Wabell. Going to go over some data with everyone. Appreciate them taking the time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Kevin Gilbert, and I am joined here by Dr. Carrie Wabell. And we're going to briefly bring before you all the HIV self-assessment, as well as our SSDS report on period one. And so...
All right, Keith. You don't go the wrong way?
No.
What am I doing?
So while they're figuring out the technology piece of this, so as a reminder, each year we have to do our HIV presentation to you twice. Once is to give you the grading that we did on our self-assessment piece. That's what this portion is. And it was submitted for final grading this spring. And so we'll come back to you once those final grades come out to go of our HIBs. And then we also like to go through and kind of show you, you know, how we've met our goals and things of that nature. And then our SSDS report is typically surrounding around the reports of harassment, intimidation, bullying, vandalism, those kind of things, more of the safety reports that we do, our annual report. And typically, we do that in two periods. Period one covers everything from, I believe, September to December. And then period two covers everything from January to August. And so with that being said, I'm going to get out of the way and turn it over to Dr. Wabell.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on. All right, I'm just going to say next slide.
There it is.
Next slide. One more.
I did all of that already. You can go to the next slide.
Yeah. Okay, so the self... So this always is confusing because we're going to... This is basically the same presentation you saw already in October. We just do it again. So these are all of the criteria that we self-assess on in October. There are 26 subcategories. Next slide. And so basically, we assess in September of 2024. In October, we submit. And then we work on our goals from '24 to '25. And then by May, June, we... They bring back the grades, and they say, yes, we agree with you. And so that's what these are, that the state has agreed with our self-assessment. Next slide. And next slide. So for each indicator, the school can say whether... If it does not meet, it gets a zero. Partially meets, one. Meets all the requirements is two. And exceeds requirements, three. What we've been working on the last few years is getting from two to three in as many categories as we can. And really, it's not to get the points, but to continue to provide best practices for anti-bullying in our schools. Next slide. So these are the self-assessment grades that we submitted. Just a caveat on the October, I had superimposed Marshall and CHS opposite, so this is just showing you that that's what happened. But these are all of our grades. And if you go to the next slide, you can see that we've had a drastic improvement in our scores over the last several years. And that's really attributed to all the work that our schools are doing, our anti-bullying specialists are doing, the school climate teams are doing so much, our administrators and our teachers. So we're really proud of that work. The highest you can go is 78. So it gets harder and harder to increase that overall number over time. So we'll see that go up more slowly next year than in years past. Next slide. Okay, so... And next slide. So we had four goals this year. The first one... Sorry, Keith, you can just go through all of them. So the first one was really protecting some learning opportunity time for anti-bullying and school climate measures. So we introduced district-wide the HIV New Jersey Bar Foundation Anti-Bullying Curriculum, and that went district-wide this year. And so every student got... Received lessons on the same topics for the entire district, of course, grade level appropriate. The middle school students also received additional lessons about interrupting bullying. We're adding that to the elementary and the high school over the next year. And specific time was being set aside for middle school SEL lessons. They've always had advisory, but we introduced the Wayfinder curriculum fully in sixth through eighth this year. And then we piloted some anti-cell phone use in the middle schools, and that's ongoing. But we did do the pilot. Next slide. The other... The next goal was really about introducing social-emotional learning more fully to our teachers. And social-emotional learning really helps anti-bullying because you're teaching not only self-awareness and how you see yourself and how you regulate your own emotions, but also how you interact with others, which can decrease bullying. And so we provided HIV training specifically for teachers, a little differently this year because we identified areas and students who are at risk for bullying in our schools in particular. Grades three to five, or pre-K to five and six to eight, we did restorative justice professional learning. We did in sixth to eight, we did that with students and teachers. It was an intergenerational model that we used, which is really exciting. And our lead teachers and counselors received some new support on our resources for Wayfinder. We also provided professional learning over last summer for parent collaboration with the HIV and anti-bullying investigation process. Next slide, and you can go through all of them. Oh, sorry, ongoing. And teachers will be getting more supports for K-5 next year in SEL. The next goal was around climate teams, so... And really supporting our families. So we continue to provide parent learning sessions around bullying and positive relationships. We created communication. So there were several letters created for the Week of Respect. So after every lesson, a letter should have gotten home about the lesson your child... Children received. We provided some parent learning session around digital citizenship in our anti-bullying night. And the book study around the anxious generation definitely was part of that learning for parents, as we see the rise in cell phones, also increases the rise in cyberbullying. Next slide. And then we did more training for anti-bullying specialists. They have several full-day trainings each year. So we provided training around supporting students with disabilities during the investigation process, vulnerable populations. We did calibration. What we want to see is that an investigation in, for example, any of our elementary schools is conducted in the same way. That's really important. So we did calibration and professional learning around family collaboration. Next slide. So we don't actually set our goals until September, but these are some of the things that we're thinking about. So more resources for social-emotional learning in K-5 and the high school, more professional learning around our one-school-one response. So a district-wide response to bullying. So if someone's being bullied, what does that student say? And then if someone is bullying someone and they receive that message, they should learn what to do also. So that's what we're working on now. Additional support for families on digital citizenship. We are seeing an increase in concerns in our younger students, fifth grade with the cell phones and some concerning cellphone behavior. So we want to really address that, starting at the elementary level. School-based targeted lessons on vulnerable populations, we want to expand that and expand our support for restorative justice right now in pre-K through eight next year. Next slide. And social-emotional supports for teachers and students. So some support from our lead teachers in SEL and K-5, curriculum resources, and professional development. Next slide. Okay, that was HIV. We can keep going with SSDS unless you want to pause for questions? Oh, we're keeping going. Okay. So the SSDS is a system in the state database where you have to report removals and certain disciplinary infractions and disciplinary incidents. So this is only going to cover December... Sorry, September through December, all of the items then. Next slide. So these are all of the incidents that we would have to submit into the state. So everything from violence, vandalism, and substance abuse to, thank goodness, we didn't have anything like this, but kidnapping. So there's lots of things on this list. Next slide. Okay, and next slide. So this is our incidences. We do expect more incidences at the high school across the state that exists. And that's our incidences for period one from September to December. Next slide. So total incidences are on the dark gray column per school, but you can see it also broken down per category for each school. The HIV alleged are not in those totals because they are alleged and they were unfounded. Next slide. Just a few graphs. So this is total incidences by type. Violence and HIV confirmed being our two largest categories. And then other incidences and substances and vandalism less. I do want to remind everyone that vandalism is only inputted in here if we have the offender. If we do not have the offender, it is still reported to central office. Of course, if it's biased, it's reported to the police, but only if we have identified the person that did it does it go in this system. Okay? Next slide. This is the total by grade band. And next slide. And this is what the difference is in types over the grade band. CHS on the left, middle school in the middle, and elementary on the right. And, you know, you would expect that the elementary would not have substance abuse and that that would possibly be there for the middle school and/or high school. Of course, our goal is to get all of these down over time always. Things that we're going to watch in period two, there was a slight increase in removals due to violence at the middle school and high school, but still significantly down over the last few years. An increase in founded HIBs at the high school, slightly. A decrease in substance abuse. And 36% of all of our HIBs were founded. Possible areas of success. Now, I say possible because this is only period one, so we want to see what the full year looks like, but looks like there was a decrease in confirmed HIBs, decrease in incidents with weapons. And just a reminder that cell phones account for a large number of alleged and confirmed HIBs. So additional support would be beneficial. That's what we're looking for. And as I mentioned, especially as we're seeing it in elementary school. Next slide. So are just areas of success and how we're supporting this. Restorative justice, professional learning provides stronger community building in the classrooms and in the schools. We have additional social-emotional learning opportunities for our students. Sixth through eighth really took part in a lot of Wayfinder lessons. Our K through 12 used the New Jersey Bar curriculum. And professional learning was provided in the area of data analysis for our anti-bullying specialists. I do want to point out that we integrated collaborative proactive solutions this year, which is a support system for students who are having some struggles in school. We're looking... We implemented it, and we're looking at more support and professional learning in that. And it really does help when students are having trouble either self-regulating or not able to have pro-social behavior. So that's been really effective, just in the very early stages of supporting kids. Next slide. So this is our continued planning. So we're going to continue to support digital literacy, expand our restorative justice professional learning, increase social-emotional learning curriculum at the high school, and provide resources for social-emotional learning in K-5. The curriculum department is supporting additional reconfiguration, slightly of some kindergarten experiences, so increased play-based learning and hands-on opportunities. That should help with self-regulation, decision-making, and social skills. And we're looking at freshman academy, increase in students' understanding of supports, social-emotional learning, community building, and lessons in school expectations. All of these items on this page are... We are hoping we will see a difference in our SSDS numbers because they help our students not only understand their expectations, but also really support that pro-social behavior. Next slide. Okay, I think that's it.
Before you all go to questions, there's a couple of things. I just wanted to say that from my arrival here in 20... In the spring of '22, one of the things the board was concerned with was a couple of things. One, our reporting mechanisms, making sure that our reporting was coming in to give us an accurate picture. Number two, our HIV situation, making sure that we were monitoring and putting things in process to help us achieve higher grading when it came to our HIBs. And I will say that with the inflection of Dr. Wabell into the mix of helping us kind of stay on course with a lot of this stuff, you can see some of the results that we're seeing. You know, we're not where we want to be, but we are definitely way better off than we used to be. And that's all we can ever count for. And so we're going to continue to move the needle. We're going to continue to put in the inputs that's necessary, and we're going to continue to build this community in our schools into the utopian of welcoming, becoming belonging and spaces that I know our families, you, the board, and our community desire for all of their students. So now with that, we'll stand for questions.
A little mic dropping.
Okay, thank you so much. That was great. Well, I mean, topic isn't always great, but you know what I mean. You guys did a great job. Questions? Liz, go on ahead. Thanks.
Thanks. One, always want to start just by thanking you. It was really nice to see the trends over time. As you said, there's definitely a noted difference in the data that we are seeing over time, and that does speak to the efforts, not just of your team, but at the school level. I wanted to ask two questions. So the first is, is there data available? Or can you talk us through the impact of what you've seen with the pilot program at the middle school level with cell phones, given that that does account for a significant number of the alleged and confirmed HIBs that we see?
So one of the things that we're looking to do in... Now that the year is over, is in September, really gather some focus groups to understand that. At this point, what we're doing over the summer is really looking at our numbers for HIBs over the full year, because this information's only till December. So I don't think we have that information yet. But over the summer, what I normally do is an analysis of all our HIV data, and I look at how many were from cell phones, how many were for different groups, and what our target... Really, our target populations were. So I'll have more information probably at the end of August to do that. But we are... And then... But we are, and then in September, we want to really look at, how did the kids feel? Because everyone I ever hear is like, they hate the idea. And then the kids love it a few days later when they realize that the cellphone is so much. So that's what we'll, we'll plan on doing in September.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. I, you know, and I agree. I've experienced that same thought process of kids kind of processing what it means to have your phone and then give it up and how much better you can feel. And I think that as we're moving towards the full implementation of that K through eight cellphone ban and then thinking through how we kind of pilot or use it within the freshman academy as well, I think it'll be important to figure out like, what does the date, like what data do we have to kind of drive that decision-making and look at that over time? So that we are capturing that data and not just as it relates to the HIBs, but really about the impact of that specific move. And then I guess like kind of connected to that, could you speak a little bit more about how you're planning to integrate the digital literacy efforts to reinforce that shift as we implement that policy a little bit more diligently next school year?
Yeah, so our digital literacy, a lot of that curriculum goes through our media specialists. And so we use a variety of sources, whether it's common sense. Common Sense Media has wonderful lessons. I know that our head librarian has put through a lot of that in our, in our media specialist program in K-5. What we've also had to do, and now we're looking at next year, adding curriculum into our Week of Respect, is done some targeted lessons after the fact, right? And so now we want to turn this a little bit more proactively. So looking at specifically, we noticed this year, last year we noticed fifth grade and this year we noticed fourth grade where there's some, definitely some hiccups in kids like getting a supercomputer in their hand and then knowing how to use that, right? And so we're looking at doing some more proactive lessons in September and October on digital literacy, school-wide or probably four through eight in order to really hammer home those, those lessons and make it more specific to what we're seeing, right? A lot of the lessons generically are, I love them, but they're, they're a little nicer, not nicer, softer. And we want, really want to be explicit with kids and be like, this is what's happening in a very developmentally appropriate way, but saying like, this is, this is great that you can use it this way and this is what you can't do, right? So really explicitly, instead of walking around the topic, I think is really important. So that's some of the work that we're going to be doing and hoping to add to that New Jersey Bar curriculum, specifically around cyberbullying for those specific grades. And, and we have, for HIB, not necessarily for, the HIB, our system actually targets which HIBs are using cell phones and which aren't. So that is one data point that we can use. But I also think our New Jersey Sky data, just over, in overall culture, we can look at and identify if things are getting better between students also. So that's probably a slower shift, but definitely something we can look at.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Looks like no one else has any questions. So you're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yeah, I don't know, it's weird. Mr. Bing, you're gonna, yep, okay, great. He's up.
We quickly want to do a quick introduction. These goals were developed in collaboration with the board and myself and senior leadership team. First go-around, we're going to now look at these goals and make some decisions of which goals we want to move forward, which goals have been completed and make some decisions about the development of new 25, 26 goals moving forward. And again, we'll do that collaboratively. Keith, are you doing that or am I doing that? I'm doing that. All right, gotcha. We're now down to four, so I'm going to go right to wins. For those of folks who aren't part of the committee, that we, where really all the, I would say 99% of the work that the board and senior leadership team does is through a committee system. Though we move through these public meetings quite quickly, the majority of the work is done via committee. One of the things we did try to start this year, we're really trying to end every meeting with committee wins so we could discuss some of the highlights that we accomplished throughout the year. Now for the Office of Assistant Superintendent, for their wins, and some of those were noted as in the HIB data. Student attendance, improved family communication, updated codes and tiered responses for chronic absenteeism. Freshman Academy development, that'll be launched, as Carrie noted, in 25, 26. Triple I kindergarten placement, increased placement at first or second closest school from 67%, that was in 2023, 24, to 71% in 24, 25. Implemented a waitlist process. SES tier balance, five out of our six elementary schools and both middle schools maintained a plus or minus 5% SES tier variance. Reduced long-term travel for low SES students decreased from 6% to 2% in 24, 25. And also improved proximity for our black elementary students, increased less than one mile travel from 34% to 52% and decreased over three-mile travel from 10% to 4%. Office of Curriculum and Instruction wins. Enhanced assessment and data tools. This was our first year of our data platform, Linkit, which really enabled us to take a new look at our achievement of our students, which really will be a priority moving into next school year. You'll see that reflected in our 25, 26 goals, where we will have a focus on student achievement. So enhanced assessment and data tools, successfully rolled out Linkit for administration, providing robust data analytics, digital learning platforms like iExcel for grades three through 12 and iReady for grades K to 2, offer personalized and adaptive learning. And also the Naglari General Abilities Test helps identify giftedness, which is all part of our multi-tiered system of support. Advancing mathematics education, successfully supported year-two implementation of Eureka Math, K to five, with ongoing professional development. Initiated a comprehensive revamp for grade six through eight math for 25, 26 implementation. We will have a new math series at our middle school level for 25 and 26. Foundational literacy, successfully rolled out the new K to two phonics program. Magnetic reading district-wide with ongoing professional training. And demonstrated student growth in mathematics, achieved significant improvements in math proficiency. 62% for our black students, up from 43% last year. 63% for Hispanic students. 55% for ninth grade special ed students, up from 33% last year. And 50% overall for grades six through eight. Business office wins unanimously passed the budget 9-0, big thanks to our community. Transparent communication engaged all stakeholder in groups in a variety of ways. Budget advisory, committee, town halls, et cetera. Successful contract settlements for Sumeo and ASCA. New requisition model, increased visibility and control over expenditures. Clean audit opinion received for the 23, 24 fiscal year. And the yield arbitrage restriction liability, successfully navigated and handled that issue. We are moving, as I believe Mr. Moody has mentioned, also to upgrade to the 21st century and upgrading our purchase electronics system for next year. I know Mr. Moody has started that work. We'll be moving in that direction in the 25, 26 school year. Facilities and grounds, repairs and maintenance, completed extensive repairs across multiple schools. Maintenance shop organization, clean and organize for safety. Plaster wall repair repaired at Seth Boyden. Psalms gym lights rebuilt, all lights. CHS picnic tables, power wash repainted and developed the whole lunch setting out there on Ritzler. Concrete work, completed concrete replacement and repair throughout the district via grant. And capital project, completing capital project this summer. South Orange Middle School is our last school to get the HVAC and air upgrade. That work has already started. They've been starting that work on weekends in regards to wiring. And now they are moving the heavy equipment in as we speak. Office of Communication wins. New district website, launched an overhauled website to be completed summer 2025. Class intercom activation activated in three schools. District Flickr launched a media repository. Google search utility achieved 18,800 website clicks. Strategic communication goals, strengthened internal communication, elevated district narrative, enhanced digital presence, town halls, facilitated town halls around budget and book study. Additionally, starting in 25, 26, we'll be moving towards an internship system, utilizing local university students and local high school students to help our communications department in regards to website development and resides to news-worthy events and things of that nature. Human Resources Department wins. Staff wellness education, conducted engaging sessions around staff wel, staff wellness. Upbeat staff survey insights, identified opportunities for growth and engagement. Retirement recognition, recognized dedicated service. Montclair State University partnership, which is a big one. Secure tuition discounts and in-district classes for staff. Staffing, another big one, no reduction in forces for the 25, 26 school year. And personnel audit, engaged in rightsizing activity around certifications, placements and positions. And Office of Student Services wins. Process and procedure training, the child study team, teams received comprehensive training on correct processes and procedures, utilizing actually NJ DOE personnel for the first time. Also CPAC collaboration since September. CPAC has been an active participant in every special education committee meeting. Speech referral forum, a new speech referral forum was created to ensure the educational impact is clear. Least restrictive environment, meaning the multi-tiered system of support. This is done hand-in-hand with our curriculum and instruction department. Graduation notice and summary, ensured that parents or adult students receive written notice of graduation with all required components and written summary of academic achievement and functional performance. And addition of a new child study team for 25 and 26 school year. And I can say almost the, they're at about a 99% completion rate for SOPs for 504 and also just general processes for the special services department. I know a lot of work has been spent around developing standard operating procedures. And finally, Technology Department wins. Construction infrastructure, wired 50-plus classrooms and non-instructural spaces. New firewall successfully deployed district-wide. K to two single sign-on, deploy QR codes for Chromebooks. This was a big ask from our K to two teachers at the start of the year, which enabled us to digitally assess our students in a lot quicker fashion for iReady. Tenant swipe systems retooled and relaunched at Columbia High School. And online fee collection set up for the 25, 26 school year, which will dramatically help us recouping funds and also taking funds as simple as prom payments, athletics, things of that nature electronically. We've had some significant progress. We also have a lot of work to do moving forward. I want to give a big thanks to the board and also our senior leadership team in addition to our building level folks, our teachers especially and our administrators who have helped me go through this first-year transition, but also have been amazing with our students and to me, that's what it all comes down to. As noted, a lot of work still to do in regards to finalizing our website, getting our standard operating procedures done, developing regs and exploring cost savings. Fully implemented, fully implementing multi-tiered system of support and increasing our focus on student achievement. So a lot more to go as we move forward. Questions? I've got about six minutes right now, not too shabby. One more slide, Keith. This is, I think there's one more on there. There we go. So we do want to give a special adios and goodbye. Arrivederci, arrivederci to our director of facilities, Tom Gigol. Gigol. I can tell you, he has been a wonderful asset to our team. And I am going to speak for our board. Just a wonderful person to interact with on a regular basis and has done wonders in his time in this district. And we wish him all the success in the world. He will be missed. We will stay in contact with him, but we did want to do a shout-out. And that was a handpicked picture from Tom, so please do not blame the superintendent around the photo. Big thanks to Tom for everything he's done. Just a quick update. Summer is upon us. We have exactly three buildings open district-wide, down from our usual five to six. That's a big thanks to Tom and also Stanley. We're trying to be a lot more energy efficient. We looked at our programming very strategically this year. We have three buildings that are currently or will be open, Tuscan, Clinton and Columbia High School. We've got various summer programs being run, whether it stems from Columbia High School prep classes to multilingual summer programs, to our summer jubilee, to summer music enrichment, to our Psalms and MS summer experiences, also to our summer bridge programs and camp invention. One shout-out program that I do want to mention is our new aviation program that is launching this summer. So I did want to mention, it is with Costanzo Air Flight School. It's pretty exciting. They, we, one of our, well, two of our Essex County school districts ran the program a couple of years ago. We got in contact with Costanzo because we had a couple of kids interested in aviation throughout the year and were emailing myself and Ms. Bodnar around resources. So we reached out to Costanzo and they will be running an immersive three-day, 12-hour program designed for our high school students, fostering an interactive introduction to aviation. We are scheduling that from June 30th to July 2nd, between 8:30 and 1:00 p.m. Program will be held at Columbia High School. Cost for this is $325 with financial assistance readily available for eligible students. So we're excited about that STEM-based program. We did want to note, a letter went out to our public around our smartphone policy. I think Liz mentioned it earlier. K to nine, we will be enforcing our cellphone policy in regards to banning smartphones. So when students come in, if they have a smartphone, that smartphone needs to be locked away and then they will be able to pick up that cellphone at the end of the day. District budget approval. Again, we want to point out the budget was all about strategic allocation of resources, really designed to bolster our academic programming, enhance essential student services and ensure the continued maintenance of our facilities. We will remain steadfast in our fiscal responsibility to taxpayers. We are extending our budget advisory council for another year and adding quarterly meetings during the school year to make sure we are adhering to our goals in our 25, 26 budget and also to get some feedback and input. feedback and input. Currently, we are completing a transfer process. We had over around 50-plus vacancies due to retirement, resignation, and also special service needs. Our past practices have been around hiring for vacancies without looking internally first. This practice would have cost the district over $5 million this year, which we did not have, and that would have resulted in major riffing similar to what we're seeing across Essex County and across the state, including some of our neighbors such as West Orange and Montclair. Obviously, this is not a great or optimal situation. We have been pretty transparent around the fact that this will not get better unless the state changes their funding formula, and unless the federal government also changes the way they fund schools. We will continue to advocate down in Trenton and also federally to make sure that South Orange Maplewood School District voices are heard on a regular basis. We will also continue to collaborate with our municipalities around advocacy. Next, board meeting in July. We'll be presenting our results of our partnership with Seton Hall University and their marketing program. We asked their students to really do some work around a central question. For us, that central question was, what are their current perceptions of South Orange Middle School? District likes, dislikes, suggestions for improvements, and how can the district improve things for families and caregivers and students? That was the key question we presented to them. They did a lot of legwork around market research, surveying, phone call interviews. We will present the results of that data in July. Big thanks to Mr. Traper, who really headed that initiative and all that work. So we'll be hearing more about that at our July meeting. Quick shout-out in regards to our graduation. Columbia High School had a seamless and wonderful graduation. I want to thank all of our board members. I want to really do a quick shout-out to Tracy Morrison, Assistant Principal over at Columbia High School for all the work she did around Columbia High School graduation, and also Frank Sanchez and his teachers and his team for just a well-run event. To say it was joyful, I think that's the word I want to use. I had a smile on my face throughout, so big thanks for our students, their parents, but especially Columbia High School. Do want to do some shout-outs. Columbia High School, Governor STEM Scholars, Year-long Research and Development Council of New Jersey Program, sponsored by Bristol, Neers, Squibb, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Innovative Medicine, Merck, Novartis, and PSG. We had one of our students accepted into that program. Only 111 kids accepted statewide who completed that program, so big shout-out to her. Six Columbia students got a head start on college by successfully completing dual enrollment courses through Kane University's Kane Scholars Academy. They've been in that program since their freshman year. I was lucky enough to be at that graduation at Kane University. It was wonderful to see our students walk across that stage with a large amount of college credits as they move on to the collegiate and university level. Also want to shout-out, and Keith, I think you have a quick slide on that. Some of the universities and colleges our students will be attending, NJIT, Georgetown, NYU, Johns Hopkins, University of Oregon, Rowan, Georgetown, UMass Amherst, yay, I'm an alumni, Penn State, Michigan, UConn, Seton Hall, University of Maryland, University of South Carolina, Indiana, Spelman, Loyola, Princeton, Howard, Brown, Northeastern, University of Colorado, Yale, College of New Jersey, Trinity College in Dublin, McGill in Canada, and many, many, many more that we couldn't list. Big shout-out to Leanna and Keith for the slideshow behind us. Also want to shout-out those students that are going into the service, US Navy, West Point, US Air Force, and US Army as well. Thank you for your dedication to our country. For our rising ninth graders, congratulations completing middle school and embarking on the exciting journey to high school. We eagerly anticipate welcoming you to your new academic home through the newly revamped and revised freshman academy. Do want to shout-out our middle schools, who in September will be competing in the New Jersey School Boards Association Steam Tank Finals in Atlantic City. So big shout-out to Psalms and MMS, and of course, our teachers who supported that program, and the chief foundation who also funded that. Also, to our rising sixth graders, congratulations on your transition to middle school. This next chapter promises new experiences, growth, and countless opportunities. We just had one of many examples of the great things going on at our elementary levels, our step program being recognized on a state and national level. So big thanks to Seth Boyden and Ms. Davenport for her presentation earlier tonight. That is all I have for the President.
Thank you Superintendent Bing. Mr. Moody, did you have an update for us?
Sure, I do, I do. I'll continue on some of the themes that Superintendent Bing touched on. You know, I'm going to give a bit of a short-form construction update to folks, but I also just want to talk about the wins. The business office wins that Superintendent Bing talked about were really broad-spectrum district-wide and Board of Education wins. I mean, we're called upon to facilitate the access of funding, the sources of funding, and directing them towards our intended use, and to be, you know, good fiscal stewards along that process, and adhere to the goals set forth by the board. So it's definitely a collaborative process, and I'm happy that we were able to actually get through the end of the year and get through the budget process and with an eye towards the future. As Superintendent Bing mentioned, it was a collaborative process. It definitely engaged in a tremendous amount of increased transparent communication. He touched on the requisition module that we're putting in place, but, you know, enough can't be said about that. We're shifting towards having the visibility and the accountability that it takes to manage a budget over the course of the year, and that's, we're rolling that out now. That's going to enhance our ability tremendously to distribute the responsibility for budget management and to make it even a more collaborative process over the course of the year. So that said, the brief construction update. Seth Boyden School, final payments were approved. We're waiting for one of our vendors' APS to repair the stairs before payment is released. Tuscan School, final payments were approved because work is done there. Marshall School, final punch list, 99% completed. We closed out, closeout documents, 98% completed. A sprinkler flow switch will be wired and programmed into the alarm panel next week. The work has been coordinated with buildings and grounds, and that's to be completed, and training will be scheduled. Our work continues over the summer. The change order for the roof work is scheduled for July. Montro School, final punch list, 99% completed, closeout documents completed, 90%, 99%. In terms of the high school, our PA system, it's underway as well as the emergency responder system. The media center, as everyone knows, completed, furniture delivered and installed, bookshelves delivered and installed, IT connections underway. Our commons area is in use by the school. Roof coatings are completed. Renovation of Existence Guidance Area is also completed. Fire alarm in A Wing is underway, pending change order around the areas to be abated for asbestos. Door hardware replacement is continuing. It's also underway. The D Wing, new doors are added, and that was an additional scope of work. We're also installation, installing permanent cores, which is 99%, I mean 90% completed. At Maplewood Middle School, final payment is approved and payment has been released. That work is done. As Superintendent mentioned, work is beginning on the South Orange Middle School electrical service, and, you know, final payment for the electrical service has been completed, but we're working on air conditioning over the summer. So one of the final things that we're doing as these construction projects are coming to fruition also is working with the auditors and our accounting staff here to look at the final balances, to see if that which we actually achieved in the way of resources through bond referendum can be brought back into the district. That is either return to fund balance, return to debt service, or return to capital or maintenance reserve. And that's the prudent thing to do, is for us to really do the accounting entries and the final overhaul and overview to make certain that we're appropriately using all the funds that we've brought in for the district, and also, given our continuing needs to be hyper-focused on fund balance over the course of this next year, we would be remiss if we did not do that process. So we are actively involved in closeout and bringing back whatever balances we can to their original funding source. That's about it for my end.
Are there any questions? Eckert?
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Not necessarily a question per se, but just more of a reminder. I was going to wait until Bill did his FFT readout, but since you talked a lot about construction, and of course, we are sad to see Tom leave. The girls locker room at CHS, the last update I believe we got was that forecasting that it would be completed by the end of December with it being ready for use January 2026. Just given, you know, I know that interviews are starting, you know, if there's any change in timeline, if you could just keep all of us apprised of that.
Oh, sure, absolutely. And, you know, when our building and grounds director, Tom, said that he was resigning, I told him to forget about it, but he still is going to proceed, but we're losing a great person there. But in fact, that work will continue. We have Epic, we have our construction teams. That work will continue, and we're actively looking for someone to come in and become our new Buildings and Grounds Directors. That work will begin, the interview work around that in the coming week or so, but we'll keep you updated and abreast.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I feel like I'm far away. All right, so I will do the President update, and then we will have public speaks. So the board had a very busy June, and I'm just going to give some highlights. This month, the board attended the annual lavender graduation for our LGBTQIA+ students. Thank you again to former BOE member Shannon Cuddell for their unwavering work to support and recognize our LGBTQ+ students. Cuddell and former Maplewood Mayor Township Committee Member Dean Daffus did a great job co-hosting this very important event. In addition, as Superintendent Bing just did, we want to recognize and congratulate all our star students who had their moving up ceremonies and graduated from CHS. Thank you to First VP Will Meyer and Second VP Regina Eckert for representing our board so well during their speeches at Psalms and MMS. Tonight, the board is pleased to pass a proclamation in honor of Pride Month that reaffirms our unwavering commitment to our LGBTQ+ students, staff, and community. The proclamation recognizes the historical significance of Pride Month, celebrates the contributions of LGBTQ+ individuals in our schools, and underscores the board and district's responsibility to maintain safe, inclusive, equitable, and affirming learning environments. Although advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBTQ+ people, they still face discrimination, especially the transgender community, thus making it essential for school districts and communities to stand up and show support for all who are affected. On Monday, June 16, we had our first of two Board of School estimate, Boes meetings to discuss the request for funds to complete key items from our long-range facility plan that require urgent attention, upgrades to Ritzler Field, and the auditoriums at our secondary schools. The board will vote on the resolution requesting funds at the July 24th meeting, after which a second Boes meeting will take place in August to approve the funding. In order to avoid disruption to students, work on Ritzler Field can only take place over the summer, so we are working within a tight timeline to make sure we are shovel-ready by summer 2026. Although not mandatory, the district has offered a courtesy review by Maplewood Township Committee and a community-based committee for the Ritzler project, which will further extend the timeline. Therefore, making swift action this summer is essential. We thank our town leaders for their support of these projects, which will continue to bring our facilities to the 21st century. Lastly, in June, the board traditionally gives a board goals update. I gave an update back in March, as we had made progress on most by then. Additional items to add to that progress include our quarterly retreats. The board is currently working on its self-evaluation, which per NJSBA is a best practice to analyze training needs and goals, which will be reviewed at our next retreat on July 23rd here in the district meeting. And maintaining our NJSBA board certification, we're still waiting for our policy checkup evaluation to be completed by NJSBA. I confirmed it is in process, and once completed, we will have our certification. Now I'll read the board president's statement. "The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, it has thoroughly been reviewed by the administration, the superintendent of schools, and the Board of Education, up to which it is placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting." Okay, so hearing and delegations. "Thank you for coming in person and joining us online this evening. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education values public involvement and respects you've taken time to address the board at tonight's meeting. As this is the board's business meeting, a friendly reminder to please be respectful as we take into consideration your valuable input, which will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. The board does have time limits by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening." So as we pursue into our policy 0167, public participation in board meetings, when it appears, the first public comment period may exceed an hour. The time limit for statements may be limited to two minutes, down from the standard three, and because we have more than 20 people signed up this evening in line, excuse me, in person and online, we will use the two-minute limit. I will also cater to any items that are on our agenda for tonight, and so that's how I'll be calling names first. And so that first person will be Donna Friedrich. Is she here? Thank you. And, sorry to interrupt, just want to say, please remember to say your full name and town when you come up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Friedrich. I'm a Maplewood resident, SO MSD graduate, and parent to three. I have been an educator in our school district for the last 26 years, most recently in the role of academic intervention at Seth Boyden. I am proud of the intervention work that's been provided over the years that has helped reach struggling readers. Some needed targeted instruction to overcome obstacles. Others needed a different type of instruction in order to reach their potential. We are a talented group of teachers, many reading specialists, committed to our craft. In the final days of this school year, the academic intervention department was essentially eliminated at our elementary schools. In the coming school year, struggling students across our school district will no longer be supported by interventionists. This is not best practice, and I have questions. What consideration was given when making this decision? How will classroom teachers reach the needs of students who fall far outside realistic differentiation of grade-level content? How will NJTSS teams build action plans that address severe academic needs with any level of success without interventionists? Relationships with students and families are at the forefront of supporting struggling learners. At the end of each year, as a part of my summative evaluation, my relationships are evaluated, communicating with families, showing professionalism, to name a few. I believe in all of these responsibilities deeply. My question to you is around what responsibility administration has to our relationship with the staff of this school district? Shouldn't the same professionalism and communication be a reciprocal expectation? The last two weeks of this school year were filled with misinformation, speculation, and rumors, while the fate of the intervention department was being decided in conversations that never even considered including any of us. As educators, we understand what it means to be flexible. We are flexible daily. This is about the professional courtesy we deserve as dedicated educators, many of whom have spent our entire careers in this school district.
Thank you so much.
One last question. I don't have the answers to a lot of these questions that I've posed tonight, but for the sake of our students, I certainly hope that there is a thoughtful plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dallas Duffy.
Hello, my name is Dallas Duffy, and I am the Secretary of Hello, my name is Dallas Duffy, and I'm the Secretary of SO MEA. I am also a mathematics teacher for the South Orange Maplewood School District, currently and for the last 19 years at Maplewood Middle School, but soon Columbia High School. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of everyone who's being involuntarily transferred, the majority of the transfers that are on the agenda tonight. Less than two weeks ago, on Friday, June 13th, people were told by a representative from H R that they were being transferred. During these meetings, people were handed a letter which informed them of the transfer, and then suggested they reach out to the administrators of their new building for any additional details. There was the opportunity to ask questions during these meetings, but this is the first time many of us heard about these transfers, and therefore, were completely blindsided, and needless to say, devastated. These transfers may be a way to eliminate services, echoing what happened last year. Perhaps on paper, these positions may seem expendable, just like those eliminated last year seemed. The complexity of how a school runs is not evident on a list of certifications, class lists, or current assignments. People held stipend positions, which they have now lost, which has led to a loss of income. People were in positions which allowed flexibility, therefore filling numerous leave replacement positions which saved the district money. People had deep-rooted relationships with the school communities, administrators, colleagues, caregivers, and students. To add insult to injury, in the most recent vacancy posting from the District, some of the positions that people were transferred out of were posted. It is unclear as to who made these decisions. The common theme is that the affected teachers were not included in the discussion. These transfers are reminiscent of those that happened two years ago. I sat in the audience of one of these meetings and listened to teachers discuss their transfers. It was asked why they weren't part of the conversation. Nothing has changed. These transfers blindsided and devastated not only those who were transferred, but also their school communities. News of these transfers destroyed the little morale that was left in the rest of the staff, many thinking that these transfers were personal or nefarious. There's a complete loss of trust, because yet again, teachers were not part of the conversation. So, on behalf of everyone who was transferred in this way, for everyone who is suffering a loss because they have to leave a building, staff, and students that they love, for anyone who now has to figure out something brand-new yet again, I ask you to please stop doing this to people. We are not just names on a list, we are the heart of the district. Please treat us like we matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rosemary. Rosemary Connell.
My name is Rosemary Connell. I am the SO MEA P R R C rep at Seth Boyden and a resident of Maplewood and proud parent of two S O M S D graduates. I'm here to speak in my role as a SO MEA rep about the recent staff transfers within our district and the pressing need to find a better, more humane way to handle these difficult and impactful changes. Please take a moment and consider what a relocation or department transfer might feel like in your own profession. You would likely need time to process why you're being moved, how the decision was made, how it would affect your daily interactions at work, how to share it with your family. It's a lot to take in. How would that affect the rest of your day at work? Now, imagine receiving this kind of news without conversation, without clarity on the how or the why, and being expected to return to your responsibilities immediately. Imagine your office or place of employment is a classroom community filled with 20 students. While absorbing this change and continuing to teach, you are also expected to now pack up three, five, 10, or even 20-plus-years' worth of materials and tools while you navigate one of the busiest, most emotionally-charged times in the school year. That is what SO MEA members experienced in the final two weeks of the 24-25 school year again. Avoidable uncertainty, disruption, and distress. The impact reached far beyond individuals transferred, it rippled through entire school communities, and it could have been significantly mitigated by one-on-one conversations at the building level. While we understand and appreciate that we're not facing widespread layoffs or rifts, gratitude for employment does not excuse or justify the impersonal and unprofessional way these transfers were handled.
Thank you, Rosemary.
The educators in this district go above and beyond. Every single day, you owe them more. SO MEA members do not feel respected or valued. You need to do better.
Thank you.
David Hummer, 26 Nelson Place, Maplewood, and let me start by thanking you all for your service to our communities. I'm here tonight to urge you to abandon your plans as part of much-needed upgrades at Ritzer Field to cover Ritzer Field with plastic, and there are three reasons why you shouldn't do this. First, your constituents are against it. Secondly, plastic is bad and has negative consequences. And third, you're not gonna solve the problem you want to solve. Your constituents are against it, not just from the comments tonight, but in 2021, the voters of Maplewood rejected 55-45 the plan of the Township Committee at the time to cover the hard field with plastic. So, there is nothing more principled than a public official voting against what their constituents want on the basis of principle. I'd like to hear what those principles are tonight, if you're gonna vote to move it forward. Secondly, plastic is bad. Okay, the best thing you can say about plastics is that they haven't been studied enough. The worst thing you can say is that they're carcinogens. You're gonna do serious damage to the drainage, and it's absurd, frankly, that at a time when towns are spending, both our towns are spending millions of dollars to improve drainage, you're gonna spend millions of dollars to make drainage worse. Third, you're not gonna solve the problem. The problem we have is we don't have enough field space. We have not added any public field space for recreation since Title IX. There are at least two pieces of private property adjacent to public property in Maplewood. Both have seriously suboptimal uses. You have an improving relationship with the governing bodies of South Orange Maplewood. They're working very well together and doing heavy lifting, like merging the fire department. You should be working with them to buy public land. You cannot solve this problem by just covering a field with plastic. So, please, please abandon these plans. I could speak far longer on how bad plastic is for our kids and for our students, and to cover this field with plastic is a mistake. Please don't spend millions of dollars to do it.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Jessica Miller.
Jessica Miller, mom to two kids in the District. Thank you all for your service. With a single high school, I often say that Columbia High School has to be many things to many students, and the same holds true for the school's field. As a neighbor, we certainly see the spring and field sports, but we also see the kids exploring Project Adventure. We see and hear them zip along the zip line, and we see kids lunching and studying in the shade, blowing off some steam between classes. Did you know that recently, our kids held a full-on music festival on Ritzer? It was amazing. The talent here is always so impressive. And so, when I view plans to cover substantial parts of the field with plastic, plastic athletic playing surface with six-to-eight-foot fencing to protect it, I ask, how do these plans serve our student body? The high fences do not allow the necessary clearance for Project Adventure zip lines. The plans seem to eliminate the lower ropes courses of Project Adventure. Is this an equitable use of space? In a day and age where we have conversations about getting kids off their screens, how are we taking away of the lion's share of their green space at their high school? How do we teach them about the warming planet, and then install a heat island outside their classroom windows, and tell them to squeeze next to it for lunch? And P S., we chop down your trees. Many of us know that currently, the only care the field gets is mowing. We know this field could be much better for our student athletes with a managed care plan. This field could have two softball fields, a soccer/Lacrosse field, full use of Project Adventure, green space for students, all while maintaining space for music festivals and the like. A Plan E that invests in overhauling and smoothing the existing surface, lays sod, installs softball infrastructure, and access points for irrigation would cost a fraction of the others, and would not require taking on new debt. This plan does not require pricey eight-to-10-year replacements, it doesn't require stormwater holding tanks, it doesn't chop down trees, and it doesn't create a heat island. If we collaborate, we can design a plan to make Ritzer Field the perfect complement to Columbia High School and its amazingly diverse student population.
Thank you. Next is Rich. Rich Wenner.
Thank you. Rich Wenner, I live in Maplewood. You've just heard, and some other people are gonna talk some more about a number of the points about the field at Ritzer and the problems with putting in the artificial turf. Rather than repeating a long list of concerns, I just want to make three quick points. One of the arguments given for turf, for artificial turf, is that it increases the number of playing days available for teams. But as this past few days has shown, extreme heat changes that calculus. This past Monday and Tuesday, grass was playable, turf was not. Extreme heat days, which are days lost to teams because of unplayably hot surfaces, will only become more frequent in the future. Planning for climate change suggests that putting plastic on our field is a bad idea. Second, as a professor of environmental psychology, I studied and taught about the value of natural landscapes for people. Known by the shorthand of biophilia, there's a large number of studies that show that connecting to nature significantly improves cognitive performance, recovery from intentionally fatiguing tasks, and stress. Given the frequently discussed concern for the stress felt by students in high school, reducing or eliminating their ability to walk-sit on real grass during the school day, which would help restore their mental abilities and reduce stress, seems to me like a step backward. Lastly, I just have to say, I am confused by the ease with which people who clearly love their children deeply and seek to protect them from harm in many ways are able so easily to dismiss potential health hazards of turf. People who, I am sure, seek to limit the presence of these same kinds of substances, such as microplastics and PFAS, that they encounter in their home. It seems to me that we have the same obligation to take that same level of care here within the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Jane Conrad.
Okay, tonight's theme for me, speaking about Ritzer Field, of course, is consider what you have before you throw it all away. And, part one in this, I want to talk to you about soil. And, there are two reasons not to discard the soil out there in that field. One thing is that, and I see that in all the plans you're considering, that's part of it. One reason is there's a lot of bad soil out there in northern New Jersey. Look at Ridgewood, they're having to spend a million and a half to do something with some bad soil that was delivered to them. We know the history of this field back several hundred years. There was a farm with fruit trees and a meadow. This is the sort of place we should wish our drinking water were being filtered through. If you let it be hauled away, don't count on getting anything back that is better than this. The other thing, the other thing is that although Ritzer has been neglected, at least it hasn't been nuked with chemical treatments. It still has a functional soil ecosystem, and really, there's nothing wrong with this soil that compost can't fix. What parent volunteers did this spring and last fall was to attempt with hand tools what a good maintenance program would do with an aerator and a top dresser. And I'm gonna leave you some photos to show you this process and the results so far, which you should also go out and look at. You know, realize that soil is stormwater infrastructure. Each 1% increase in organic matter, compost lets soil hold 20,000 gallons more per acre, so that at 5% organic matter, Ritzer Field could hold 400,000 gallons of rain. That's 100% of the 100-year, two-hour rainstorm. Consider what you have, consider with what little money and effort you could have a great grass field that would satisfy everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Carrick, could you, you want to leave something for us? He could grab it, or?
You know, I'm at a stage of the second comment period.
Okay, no worries. Thanks. Okay, Jonathan?
Hello, Jonathan Poor, Maplewood. There's lots to say, but not a lot of time to say it, so. Okay, for years, I've been hearing that the problem was we need more fields. Currently, Ritzer can fit two full high-school-sized soccer fields running east-west, side-by-side, but all four of the proposed plans actually reduce the number of available playing fields. Adding a softball field to Ritzer limits the flexibility that we have with the large, grassy square. Currently, there are three soccer teams that practice and play games on Ritzer in the fall. Under these plans, this would not be possible. Where will they go? We are told that Title IX suit has led to the addition of a softball field to the project. However, I think there's a better solution, my version of a Plan E, if you will. Let's keep Ritzer as a versatile, flexible, natural grass field with an intelligent maintenance schedule. At the same time, let's convert the J V baseball field at Underhill into a top-notch varsity softball field. That would achieve total parity with the boys' baseball program. J V and varsity for both sports can schedule so that they swap home and away games, an approach already suggested by the District Athletic Director as a way to handle Plans C and D with a single softball field. Okay, let's model the rejuvenation and care of an all-grass Ritzer Field after the program in place in Glen Ridge, which has excellent grass fields that support usage equal to that of Ritzer, and at quite a reasonable cost. They spend $50,000 to maintain, I believe it's eight acres, of grass playing fields. So, this Plan E of mine here would achieve equity with the boys' program, maintains access to playing fields for soccer and lacrosse, is affordable, and avoids all of the environmental and social negatives associated with artificial turf. So, I think we can do this, it's just a matter of information and knowledge and the willingness to put in the effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is Ben here? Ben Vitale?
Hi, Ben Vitale, South Orange, two daughters, one graduated from the District and one's still junior at the high school. Thanks to the Board and the Superintendent for doing a good job running our district. I'm here to talk about Ritzer Field and artificial turf. I spoke earlier about this at the Board of School Estimate meeting, so I won't repeat my remarks there, but I do support all the things that my colleagues are saying tonight about trying to choose a plan that, you know, uses grass. But if you, if I, from what happened at the previous meeting and the looks on your faces tonight, I have a feeling that your minds may already be made up. If that is the case, I want to leave you with four ideas. The first idea is please choose a plan with a minimum amount of synthetic turf possible. The second idea is please use artificial, sorry, alternative infill. The architect from Spiegel Architecture talked about this, and I think you should seriously consider it. Organic infill addresses about half the problems with the serious environmental consequences of artificial turf. It's been tried in Europe, works great. I'll send you some links if you're interested. I was shocked to learn recently that artificial turf playing fields are the second-largest source of microplastics in our rivers. That's a big deal. Third, I would like to suggest that you budget now for responsible disposal of the turf field when its life is over. That means recycling. It's not cheap, but that's the responsible thing to do. If you're gonna commit to doing this, you gotta figure out how you're gonna clean it up, and you're gonna tell up and you're gonna tell the community what it's gonna cost to pay for that. And not just dump this on the environment in a landfill in eight, 10, 12 years' time. You're talking about one or two acres of plastic that's gonna weigh 200 to 400 tons, gotta have a plan for that. Finally, very briefly, fix the Title IX problem by remaking your schedule tomorrow morning to share the existing field time 50/50. Please do it right away, then we don't have a lawsuit on our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Paul Stephan?
Good evening, Paul Stephan, I'm a Maplewood resident. I'm sad to say I don't think turf is gonna solve the, the problems that we have. Ritzler Field is not well-maintained, that's absolutely true, but you can't turf your way out of maintenance obligations. Turf has to be maintained as well, and turf has to be replaced, at least once every 12 years, probably every eight to 10 years. And the costs that were shared at the Board of School Estimate contemplate just one replacement in a 24-year period. So that, I mean, that's just simply, you know, mistaken. Title IX has been talked about a good bit. Title IX does not require turf, it doesn't require grass, it doesn't require any kind of facility or, or sports at all. What it requires is equity, and whatever sports or whatever programming you have, you have to provide the same kind of opportunities to boys and girls, absolutely. And if we're gonna talk about parity between boys' baseball and girls' softball, we should absolutely have that conversation. But boys' baseball plays on grass. You know, and, and there's been some sense of urgency expressed by some of you and this feeling that, well, we've gotta, you know, pass the turf on Ritzler right now. I'm not exactly sure why that is. Is it because we can say we've made a good faith effort at maintaining the grass as is? No. Is it because we have something better than an IOU on the stormwater plan? No. Is it because we have low material costs because trade wars are over? No. Is it because there's low interest rates, so it's a good time to borrow money? No. Is it because we don't have a lot of debt right now such that we should be comfortable foisting upon taxpayers an additional $400 per household? No. I know a lot of you probably already have your mind made up, but I'd ask you to consider what's been called Plan E. Not Ritzler Field as it currently is, but Ritzler Field if we actually put the money into maintaining it the way we ought to. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anna Grossman? Is Anna here? Thank you.
I'm Anna Grossman, I am a resident of Montclair. I've come here tonight to speak to you as a mom of a kid who was a student athlete and as someone who lives now 50 feet from what was a beautiful grass field and has now become a heat island per NJDP, thanks to artificial turf. And it's brutal. I've had to buy more air conditioners, my emissions are going up, and plants have been scorched. I understand the desire to have great facilities for student athletes, but I don't understand why you don't follow the advice of Mount Sinai Children's Environmental Health Center. They are clear on the reasons not to install artificial turf. Don't you follow pediatric expert medical advice for everything else? What gives you the right to ignore them? You were not elected to ignore pediatric medical advice. How about science? Do you follow science or not when it's not convenient? Do you believe that that turf is PFAS-free? Because let me tell you, I tested the turf that they put in front of my house. It is not PFAS-free. $1,400 gave me that answer, the answer that the BOE didn't want to give me. Recycling, it's a lie, it does not get recycled. Soil, Jane has told you. Heat, you saw what had, happened in Patterson, right? That was pretty obvious. You cannot have people on artificial turf when the temperature is over a certain amount. That's the argument people make, is that artificial turf is not good for rain. What about when it's hot? Yesterday was 97 degrees, so I took an egg and I put it on a piece of artificial turf. It baked. The yolk baked, the albumen, not so much, because it needs 180 degrees. So you know the old commercial, right? This is your brain, this is your brain on drugs. This is your kids, this is your kids on artificial turf. Why do you think you have the right to do that?
Thank you. Now we will go to online speaks, and we're gonna start with what's on the agenda, and that will be TC member Dean Daffis. Is Dean Daffis available?
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi.
Thank you, Board President Val Wilson, and good evening. Good evening to all the fellow, fellow Board members and to the district. My name is Dean Daffis, I live in Maplewood, New Jersey. Like you, I'm a public servant. As you noted, I serve on the governing body of Maplewood, the Township Committee, served previously as mayor. I'm a current member of the Board of School Estimate Committee. I appear before you this evening to lend my support for and express my deep gratitude to the board and the district for continuing to honor pride again this year with your proclamation this evening. These gestures serve to continue fostering an inclusive school climate and inclusive welcoming community. I applaud you for continuing to lean into this, especially right now in the climate that we're in, cultural and legal attacks against the LGBTQ community, especially against our trans youth. It would be easier to retract and shy away from pride, as some districts are doing, but you truly recognize the critical need to send a strong message to our LGBTQ students and their students, and that they belong. This is what they need to live openly, authentically, to realize their fullest potential in life, to thrive, to be healthy in body and mind. We truly are very proud of them. And it's very fitting for your proclamation to be adopted on the same night of your reporting the district's progress in anti-bullying, and on this day, the 10th anniversary of the Supreme Court's Obergefell decision ending marriage discrimination, a monumental step forward in the LGBTQ plus civil rights movement, legalizing and accepting LGBTQ marriages and households across the nation, legitimizing our families because love is love. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, next we will have online, Siddhartha Decker.
Hi, I just wanted to kind of comment really quickly about the situation at Ritzler Field. I think you've heard all the facts, and this is just more a plea to the board. I, I live on Hickson Place, right by Ritzler, and I just implore you to think about quality of life. The quality of life of the students, the quality of life of the Academy Heights neighborhood, who have been good stewards and neighbors to, to the high school, and, you know, to the wider, the wider community. Just today, we saw some preschool children playing on the field from Tootree, just having a wonderful time. Will they, will they get to enjoy that when they, when the turf is on there? I don't believe so. So just wanted to kind of plug the Plan E plan, and just really think about the quality of life and make sure, whatever you're considering, that there is harmony between, you know, the needs of the students, but also the environment and the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Paul Soroval.
Yes.
Okay. I'm urging the board to exercise due diligence on the potential health and environmental risks from covering Ritzler's grass with artificial turf, plastic that is riddled with known chemical toxins and carcinogens. I think the health and environmental impacts of artificial turf deserve at least as much consideration as comparing playing time and wear and tear. Above all, I urge you to consider the warnings against artificial turf by the experts at the preeminent organization dedicated to protecting children's health and the environment, the Mount Sinai Children's Environmental Health Center at the Icahn School of Medicine. I've emailed all of you the link to the center's position paper on the risks of artificial turf. Here's an excerpt, quote, "We strongly discourage the installation of artificial turf playing surfaces and fields due to the uncertainties surrounding the safety of these products and the potential for dangerous heat and chemical exposures. In addition, recent studies demonstrating the presence of PFAS and microplastics in these products raise significant concerns for both human health and environmental contamination", end quote. Please exercise your due diligence and invite the center to address these questions. It's a sad irony to see our community removing toxic lead pipes and asbestos while at the same time this body considers removing Columbia's green space and replacing it with known toxic materials. Please consider the clean, green, and least expensive choice, Option E, an all-grass, multipurpose field that will address the inequities of girls' softball and serve the needs of athletes and non-athletes alike, as well as members of the community, including the local preschools that rely on Ritzler's grass. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we will have Kate McCaffrey.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Artificial turf is a carpet of synthetic fibers that imitates the appearance of a grass field. As we know, for decades, concerns have swirled around the toxicity of its components, polysilic, aromatic hydrocarbons, phthalates, and metals that leach from it into our bodies and continue to contaminate the environment when it ends up in landfill at the end of its lifespan. There, it leaches more chemicals and emits dangerous greenhouse gases for generations. The board is considering a proposal to spend upwards of $5 million public dollars to eliminate a vital public green space to install instead a semi-private, toxic hardscape at Ritzler Field. Turf fields gated and monitored do not serve the public interest. Raising a grass field to replace it with turf is similar to pouring concrete over a yard, although concrete gets less hot. Nor are turf fields good for our, our athletes. The hard surfaces are associated with ACL and Achilles tendon injuries and increased stress on joints. On a scorching day, artificial turf can get hot enough to melt shoes and blister hands and feet, and as we saw this evening, cook an egg. It is extremely irresponsible to ignore mounting evidence about the health and climate impacts of these toxic cement fields and to invest public funds to destroy a community green space. Moreover, it strikes me as extremely undemocratic to schedule an August vote on this proposal, presumably to limit public participation and input. Maplewood twice has voted down turf fields in public referenda. The community's voice has been clear and the science is on our side. I respectfully request that our public leaders ask as, act as responsible stewards of our tax money and invest in sustainable turf management. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next we have Rebecca Scholl.
I'm a resident of South Orange, a mother of two elementary-age children and a teacher. Mine has been one of the many voices pleading with the BOE and BOSC over the past few years to retain the natural grass at Ritzler Field. My children are both involved in team sports, and the health and safety of children is very important to me. This board is filled with impressive individuals who I'm guessing follow health science and make healthy choices for their own families. Why are you all feigning ignorance about the very real dangers of artificial turf? Why are you morally comfortable with exposing our children to cancer-causing chemicals? While SMMSD elementary students are learning about conservation, climate change, and recycling in science class, the adults in charge are moving natural landscape in favor of ecologically disastrous plastic waste. It's inexcusable that there are Title IX issues in our town. Why haven't the current facilities been shared equitably between boys' and girls' teams? Why are the girls being forced to wait and then someday settle for cancer-causing plastic fields? Why can't this district first attempt to at least water and provide basic care to the natural grass you currently have, and equitably share all athletic facilities starting immediately? I urge you to consider presenting Plan E to the BOSC. Not only is it the healthiest option, it's also the least expensive. Please consider the transportation issues, facility issues, and staff vacancies throughout the district. Superintendent Bing has held town halls warning of fiscal cliffs and impending cuts to special education, which would devastate our IEP student outcomes. The proposal to spend millions on synthetic turf is surreal given the district's bleak financial outlook. Just because you can legally request infinite facilities funding from the BOSC does not mean you should. Please ask yourselves what kind of legacy you want to leave. How do you think CHS students will react when they can no longer eat lunch on Ritzler Field or participate in project adventure because a relatively small number of field athletes have been catered to above the rest of the student body? How will the taxpayers of our town feel when they're forced to pay for plastic grass maintenance in perpetuity? Please consider the cautionary tales provided by the towns of Westfield, Ridgewood, Montclair, and countless others. Thank you.
Next we have Deviana Guha.
Can you please repeat that name?
Deviani, and then G-U-H-A is the last name?
That community member is not online.
Okay, Julie Bursting?
I hope you can hear me. My name is Julie Bursting, and I am a neighbor in Maplewood, New Jersey, and I have had two children who went through the school system here. I just want to thank everyone in the room there and online who have made such beautiful cases against artificial turf in our community. I don't have anything to add to this, I think it is all so convincing. I just want to raise my voice with them to say, this does not feel like the Maplewood and South Orange that I've lived in for 28 years to destroy a green space and cover it in plastic. So please, I, I really plead with you to reconsider and consider what people have put together with Plan E to be able to save green space, not just for our sports teams, but also for all the other students and community members who need that forest bathing, that opportunity to be in a green space to reset their heads in the middle of a hectic school day. This is so important, and I really expect that you will all do the right thing and find another way to address all of these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie. Is Wiley Borg?
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thanks.
Great, all right. My name is Wiley Borg, I am a rising ninth grader, and I have a lot to say about the artificial turf fields. First off, they are needlessly expensive. They require much more maintenance than a traditional grass field. Not only that, the traditional grass fields are cheaper over time. The money proposed for turf installation could be better spent on improving the existing field or invested in other projects such as refurbishing classrooms or other amenities in the school. Next, health and safety risks. It absorbs and radiates heat, making it dangerously hot in the warmer months. It's been seen that it can reach temperatures 120 to 180 degrees Fahrenheit, which normal grass cannot. It also prevents water absorption, which is highly negative for environmental health, and it contributes to stormwater runoff and local flooding risks. It's also dangerous to people. It releases demical, dangerous chemicals such as benzene, arsenic, poly, polyallic, acromic hydrocarbons or PHases, latex, which may flare up certain persons' allergies and releases microplastics into the environment. Not only that, but it can release PFases or PHER and polyfluor-alkyl substances, better known as forever chemicals, those of which are specifically and scientifically linked to medical complications such as cancer. to medical complications such as cancer and other debilitating diseases. These dangers are further supported by the National Institute of Health, the New York Times, the Center for Disease Control, or the CBC, the Environmental Protection C, or the EPA, and numerous other environmentally focused organizations. Furthermore, they are hard surfaces and are much more dangerous than traditional grass fields. It increases the risk of ACL tears, abrasions, cuts, paired with the hot temperatures that is extremely poor-conditioned for people to play in. It also may result in the demolition of Project Adventure, which would devastate a lot of the students actually going to school, which is the main people this would affect. It would bar the field from recreational uses. I personally use the field a lot, and if it were barred off, that would remove a large space for me to do recreational things with my friends. So I hope you take this into consideration, hear out what everybody else has said. It would be greatly negative to the greater community, and it's just not a smart idea in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wiley. Next, we have Township Committee Member Deb Engel.
That committee member is not online.
Okay, next, we have Josh Sterman.
My name is Joshua Sterman. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, we can hear you, thanks.
All right. My name is Joshua Sterman. I also live on Hickson Place. I want to continue the conversation about how there has been no proposal for an Option E except for the members of the community. It's been stated multiple times in many ways that it would be cheaper to maintain the grass field that is currently there. All of these options are terrible for the students who don't play sports on that field. They're also terrible for the students who would be playing sports on the field. It's been cited many times today how awful it would be for anyone to play in temperatures similar to what we've experienced this week. We keep talking about allowing students to get out and be out in the world instead of being inside on their phones when we are now removing an option for them to do that. The astroturf, the artificial turf, will not allow anyone to be able to enjoy themselves outside.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were done.
No, ma'am, I am done.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Next, we have Howard Fisher.
Community Member Fisher, you need to unmute your microphone.
Sorry, you said he's not on?
Mr. Fisher, you need to unmute your microphone.
Should we come back to the, okay, so then next, we have William Graves.
That committee member is not online.
Okay, next is Jerry Hall.
I hope you can hear me. I'm very proud to say that I am the mother of a very articulate, rising ninth grader, and I'm also here to express my concerns and opposition to the proposed plan turf fields at Columbia High School in Ritzers Field. As we have just experienced a heat wave in June, not even the height of summer, the proposed plans for turf are short-sighted and a disservice to the Maplewood and South Orange communities. In our area of New Jersey, we are only going to experience more days over 90 degrees plus flooding during storms. The removal of a grass field, which helps mitigate both flooding and heat islands, would be an environmental disaster with negative repercussions irreversible for years to come. There were several proposals put forth, yet not one included maintenance for a full grass field. Why was there such an omission? I cannot believe it. We deserve another plan, a proposal for an all-grass playing field that more can enjoy. A properly maintained grass field provides green space to all students and the community and allows for flexible usage throughout the year. Additionally, the loss of the tree canopy and shade in the area will only exacerbate heat issues for the surrounding neighborhoods. Tree cover in a city block can provide up to 10 degrees of cooling. The removal of mature trees negatively impacts the entire community immediately. The Trump administration's current efforts to eliminate environmental protections and funds that reduce pollution in communities across the country threaten public health, our health, and the health of our young people especially. We cannot afford, as a community, to be part of the problem. Given the funding shortfalls in so many areas that the school district faces in the next several years, this multimillion-dollar expenditure should not be a priority. The costs, both monetarily and environmentally, are too much for our community to bear. I expect our two towns and the board to be more creative in finding ways for our sports teams to have equitable playtime while also maintaining proper environmental stewardship of the land in our community, especially for our Columbia High School students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, we have two more left. Cynthia O'Keefe.
Can you hear me? Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Cynthia O'Keefe. I'm a resident of Ridgewood, New Jersey. Interestingly enough, just being an outside observer, but I have attended earlier meetings where this field turf was presented earlier with an Excel spreadsheet talking to the community about turf being a cheaper option. We know that's not true. But listening to all of these intelligent people speak about all of the negative impacts that turf will have on children's health, on the climate, on, you know, many other things that go on in the community, just with heat islands. I'm not sure if you're aware, there were articles on Hinchcliffe Stadium. It was graduation that needed to be canceled. It wasn't even a sports activity that was being played there, and they had to take almost 150 people for some kind of medical care. It was a very, you know, dire situation. People were taken out in stretchers. I mean, I don't know that you really are realizing what's going on, and, you know, you're exacerbating the problem here. And by gaslighting the community, I'm not saying the public officials have done that, but whoever was giving that Excel spreadsheet presentation, I believe it was last year, I was shocked because artificial turf is not cheaper. You also need to sanitize the turf from blood, from sweat, from spit, from all kinds of bodily fluids. Do you know that artificial turf vendors will not contractually guarantee the absence of chemicals in their products? And they will also caution against children drinking water while playing on a turf field. Now, what does a kid do right after they run off the field? They open a bottle of water and they drink it. So, you know, it's very dangerous what's happening. It seems like a smart group of people making some really, you know, haphazard and stupid decisions, in my opinion. Thank you.
Next, we have, final is Erin Bullen. Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. I won't echo too exactly what Cynthia has so articulately shared, but other than I live across the street from five acres, I think, or four acres of synthetic turf, there's a building separating me, which would actually make it seven acres of artificial turf across the street from my home. As Cynthia said, there was just a heat casualty in Patterson. I spent my day yesterday going from field to field measuring temperatures. I did this three different times, at 8:45, around noon, and again around 6:00. At 8:45 in the morning, it was 122 degrees on one field, an older field. On a newer field that was maybe one year old, it was 117 degrees, which says to me some chemical has shed off of the older field into our water system, keeping the heat down on the newer one and raising it on the older one. At 6 o'clock, these fields were up to 134 degrees, I believe. There is no safe way in which these fields can be used in our communities. They create heat islands. My neighborhood has now been warned, officially warned, by the NJDEP that we are a designated heat island, and we should be cautioned to, I guess, for our own well-being, just because we live next to it. So please don't do this in your community. We are, you're an intelligent community. I live in Montclair. I don't think I said that, and...
Thank you, Erin. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we are going to move on to committee reports. We'll hear from the chairs of each of our committees with highlights from this month's meetings.
We'll have a second public speak, so he can sign up for that. We've got to move on to, well, we, yeah. So, let's see, we'll start on this side because we have Rutgers this month. Thanks.
All right. The Rutgers, the Rutgers Implementation Committee met on June 17th. Those attending from the board were President Deval Wilson, Second Vice President Eckert, Board Member Sackett Gabel, and myself. Those attending from the administration were Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Dr. Weble. Among the issues discussed in committee were the following: suggested revisions to policies 5124, student internal transfer, and 5120, assignment of students. Discussion centered around what the district may consider as hardship when granting transfer requests. Policies were sent back to the policy committee with revisions discussed in the meeting. The district will be working on transfer policy rubric so that it can be publicly posted. Triple-I placements for the 2526 school year were also discussed. The district informed us that a revised methodology was used in placing kindergarten students for the 2526 school year. Instead of using a random number for determining a student's school assignment order in algorithm, the district used a student's distance to school as recommended by the ALPS group. This means that if a student is closer to their home school, so, for example, one block, they are assigned ahead of a student further away, so a student one mile from their home school. The last item discussed was the upcoming triple-I evaluation. The district is working with ALPS group and will be running data and beta-testing scenarios, taking into account some of the recommendations made by the ALPS group in the May Boar Meeting. For example, they will be beta-testing variance options to see how changes in variance affect racial demographics in elementary schools and the percentage of students that get their first or second school choice. On this topic, there was discussion around balancing transportation costs and students' time on buses with the need to demographically rebalance our schools, concern about isolated placements in neighborhoods, and also isolated placements in individual classrooms, and the need to provide transportation with triple-I if students are not assigned to their closest school. Because there were a number of items on the agenda that we didn't have time to discuss, as well as the district's continued near-term plans to work through the triple-I evaluation, we added a meeting for July. That meeting will be on July 8th. Please go to the district website for a full recap of the meeting in the board committee section. Any questions?
Thank you. And, yeah, there was so much to discuss in that meeting, so it's good that we're having another one in July. And I just had two quick thoughts and requests about a couple of the pieces you mentioned, Deidre. Can the Rutgers Committee take a look at any existing transfer request data, like if there are any categories of types of requests, so we can just talk about any patterns or trends that can help perhaps develop the hardship categories and kind of flesh those out a bit more based on the data? And then, secondly, regarding the rubric, just wondering if we can ensure some consensus through the committee process before the rubric is designed? I know it's going back to policy, but then I just want to make sure there's time built in to, just to develop the policy language before the rubric is then put into place.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it'll go back to policy with revisions made in the committee, and then, in the meantime, the district will be developing the rubric.
Okay, so they're gonna, okay, I thought maybe they were developing it before the, before the policy language was solidified.
Yeah, we've been working on it since, I would say it's in draft form, but they're still working on it.
Yeah, so it just will help to sync up between the policy languages.
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks. Hi, Liz, go on ahead.
Hi, thank you. I know I'm about to be like the looming 30-foot figure behind your heads. I just wanted to co-sign, yeah, I guess I was also curious about part of what Sheena had flagged here, just the development of the rubric. It seems as though that should be responsive to when policy language is solidified and there's consensus around it, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, in fact, what was happening, so that we're not putting the cart before the hearse and developing a rubric that may, in fact, not be responsive to then, the language that is developed and normed on, and we have consensus on. That aside, I also just wanted to ask, could you share, Board Member Brent, a little bit more of, when you say the triple-I evaluation, there was a document that was shared alongside it, and so I think we've been using that language, but I think I'd just like some more clarity for myself and for the community about what that evaluation is that we're referencing, what it's intended to convey, and then who is responsible for generating that document, especially as it becomes part of this broader discussion from Rutgers?
Sure. I mean, basically, when we're referring to triple-I evaluation, it's just the district taking a look at what's working, what's not working, and how it can be improved. And so the district is thinking about options for potential improvement so that it can be more, it can meet the goals of rebalancing the school, which we discussed in committee as a goal, but also be more student and family-friendly and meet some of the hardship and concerns that the community is feeling. And I think also, another topic discussed was also being sensitive to our transportation costs, and, you know, are there ways that we can be more efficient there with, at the same time, rebalancing our schools?
Got it. That makes sense. And then the last part of my question was just, you said the district, but was the district responsible for creating that document?
Are you talking about the document that was put together for the agenda, for the discussion?
Yeah, because it's labeled triple-I evaluation, and then that's how it's, so I'm just curious.
Oh, that was not an evaluation, that was a discussion guide, just to spur discussion.
Okay, so when you're saying, okay, so what...
That is not the triple-I evaluation.
Okay, so then I guess, could you just provide more clarity then? Is the triple, then what do you mean when you're saying the triple-I evaluation? Are there specific criteria that you're looking at, or is that just responsive to, like what is that specifically responsive to when we're saying that?
So, okay, so in the agenda, the agenda says triple-I evaluation. That is just a discussion item to, there's no formal document of an evaluation, if that's what you're asking. There was a document in the agenda that helped guide the discussion, but that is not, there is, that is not an evaluation of itself. The district is doing an evaluation, and that's what they're going to continue to present information to us on.
Okay, I think it might just be helpful to have some more clarity in the notes on that, because it's not abundantly clear reading through that exactly how that document is different or standalone from something else that might be considered, so just for clarity for all the board members, it might be helpful just to figure that out from a notes perspective.
Noted.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, Jeff?
We'll just utilize different terminology instead of evaluation.
Tune-up, call it a tune-up. Okay, Jeff, sorry, you had something?
I have a lot of things to say about the triple-I placement change. So for the 2526 school year, it sounds like... So for the 2526 school year, it sounds like we made a change to how kids are placed. Instead of using a random number to determine precedence for, you know, when kids are assigned to their closest school, which more or less determines who goes to their closest school and who goes to a more distant school, like, we're now using distance to the closest school. And like, I think there are a lot of advantages to that, like, the two major ones, that it does create a true proximity weight. Now, kids who live very close to a school will almost always be assigned there, and the kids who are assigned to more distant schools will be kids who don't live that close to a closest school. Not everyone is a winner, but I think that a lot of the people who don't go to closest schools will be more neutral about it than people who live very close to it. This, when we were told about the triple-I in 2020, 2021, like, we were told there'd be a proximity weight. Like, for instance, I have a quote, "We believe that our algorithm should weigh proximity to schools greatly. This will assist in minimizing the escalation of transportation costs." And like, the words like proximity and weight were frequently juxtaposed. So a lot of people, like, including me, like, we thought the closer you lived to a school, the more likely you were to be assigned there. But that's not how the first four years of the triple-I worked. So it does create a proximity weight. I think another advantage is, in the long run, it would be better for transportation, because like, you know, we would have zones of South Orange Maplewood that no gen-ed kid is being bused in. And like, you know, you would have like concentrated zones of kids being bused who are kind of like on the borderlands between schools. But it would take a long time for that advantage to materialize. In the short run, though, I think it does create like microneighborhoods. Like, it turns out that microneighborhoods were really tools of socioeconomic classification. Like, it determines like who's like SES high, SES middle, SES low. But they weren't cluster grouping. Like, you know, three kids on the same block could be assigned to three different schools, because their random numbers would likely be different. But now, if three kids live in the same block, like, their distance to the closest school would be very close. It could be like 150, 152, 153, something like that. So it does create what I think people thought micro neighborhoods were really going to be. So I just want to say that for like anybody following this. My question is like, will the district be coming out with like a explanation of, you know, how the triple-I worked for 2526? Because like, you know, it's a third big change to the triple-I since it was created, along with transportation and the transfer system, both being 2023. So I would hope that we explain it to the public.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Alves touched upon it, was that last meeting? Last meeting. So we requested a beta test, and that proximity measure is part of the beta test, testing, and that's what they utilized when they did the 2526 algorithm. So we can get more information on that for you from Mr. Alves.
Yes, for the public. I'm sorry, I hope I'm not saying too much, but I thought the triple-I in the first four years should have been really referred to as a lottery. Like, we usually called it an algorithm, but like other districts that also used random numbers, they were candid, and they would use the word lottery. But now, since we don't use random numbers, actually, I don't think lottery would be the right word for it at all. That's what I thought for the first four years, but not this coming school year. Like, I think now we could call it like really fairly an algorithm, so that's a compliment.
I'm just going to, I'll jump onto Board Member Bennett's comment for a second, because I also, through the information from the Rutgers meeting, learned about that we changed the way the algorithm, quote-unquote, was working for kindergarten assignment this year. I, and it's looking like our text thread here, we're going to show it to the public. I have concerns about unintended possible consequences from moving to the full proximity model and away from some of the randomization that was used before, but I think it's important that we make sure, I'm not sure that there had been conversations in committees regarding that shift, and just making sure that as we go through this and exploring possible changes for efficiency and addressing all the constituent needs, that we are looking at this and discussing it in advance. I also had made mention, I think maybe a year ago, I think this would be a best practice for us, that we try to actually boil down the actual description of what the placement process is for triple-I. Right now, it's scattered among PowerPoints over the course of five years of triple-I planning and implementation. I think we ought to have that as a regulation that actually is implementing policy 5120 and/or 5124, as we're looking at them, so that the public can look and see this is exactly how this process is working. So as one piece of that, as we go forward.
And I'll just add, no, that was new information. We hadn't discussed that change till the committee meeting two weeks ago. And for July, the plan is for July, the district to put forth kind of their initial thoughts on what they're going to beta-test and what they're thinking, and then that would be presented to the full board for continued discussion, and then obviously the public too at some point. But I, it was my understanding, and Mr. Bing, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that rubric that we discussed would be not only kind of explaining the, what is a hardship, but what is the triple-I process in general? You know, how do you get on the waitlist? How do you request a transfer? All of that. Because I do agree, a lot of that information is not clear on the website, even sometimes hard to find.
Yeah, I'll echo what Will said. I think that we need to do a better job in regards to public access to that information and what it is.
Madam President, I think Board Member Callahan has a question.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. So I would just build on what Board Member Meyer just said, and I know this has come up in other spaces before. I think to add to that additional clarity, I think it would also be really helpful, as we're, you know, a couple years into this, as Board Member Bennett has noted, there have been, you know, different changes over the last couple of years. I think it would also be really helpful to incorporate into our new communication strategy, having Evergreen Town Halls about this, so that new families who are new to the district can get a sense of the history, why this is important to our community, why this, why prior integration efforts were not successful, why this is unique, why this is exciting, why we are being responsive as a board and a district to making sure that we can maintain it in a functional way, and why integration is good for our kids, and what are the knuts and bolts, and how does this work here? I think will be really important in just filling in the blanks for especially new community members, so that they have the information coming directly from us as the source, being the district, would be really helpful to incorporate into our cadence of community communication. With that, I wanted to just ask one more question. I know Board Member Bren, you were just saying that some of Mr. Alves's recommendations are being considered. They will be discussed in this upcoming meeting, including the possibility of increasing the variance. So can you clarify specifically what that means for the community, just so that there is shared understanding? And then specifically, because there were some suggestions that he did just make in our May meeting that would pertain to 5124, which is currently under review, was there any conversation in committee about incorporating a choice-based transfer policy as he recommended? And if not, could that potentially be something that the district includes for conversation when he is running some of those beta tests and having conversations about how we can make some changes moving forward?
All of those things are going to be discussed in the future, from based on what we heard in our meeting. Superintendent Bing, you were going to say something?
The future, like specifically like in this upcoming meeting with Mr. Alves, where he's beta-testing things like variance or like a future...
So we asked Mr. Alves, all the above was, to really frame a scenario of choice-based transfer, also to look at a 7% and 10% variance as well.
Also, Board Member Callahan, we've already discussed with Superintendent Bing about having an annual township, annual town hall on the triple-I. We asked for it since 2023 to happen annually. I believe we'll actually make it happen this time.
Yes, I know. That's something we're on the same page about.
Yeah, he's done such a great job of having town halls, but it's something that we had been discussing since early on this year. And we could actually talk about it more at our retreat, and can try to like schedule, think about some more themes for the rest of the school year. So thank you.
I'll just add, because I want to set expectations for the July meeting, because it's my understanding that there's a meeting with ALPS group where some information will be presented, but I'm not sure the district will have all the information ready to present. Like, I'm not sure they'll be ready to present the controlled choice transfer policy quite yet or anything like that. So that's why we'll have, we'll meet in July, see what new information they have, if they've been able to run any beta tests, et cetera, and then we'll have another meeting in August. So it's just going to be an iterative process.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure, like, from an information perspective, as we're making considerations around policy that, you know, have really, you know, policy, once it's in, it's really important that we're taking into account all these considerations. So I just want to make sure we have the best information and all the information we need to make really thorough policy considerations. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Policy?
Absolutely. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, June 3, and I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly because of the time. I'm going to note, most importantly here, that we have a number of policies that are up for second read and for first read. Second read tonight, we are putting through Regulation 2418, implementing Section 504. We're putting through Policy 1331, Evaluation of the Board's Secretaries, to clarify that that role in a district like ours rests with the superintendent. Policy 3217 and 4217, Regarding Use of Corporal Punishment by Teachers and Staff, to note that that policy is read in concert with the protections for students regarding physical restraint. First-read policies, we've got a few that, well, first, we have a Regulation 1570 on Internal Controls. This is a very boring policy, just we didn't have it there for a long time. We're finally putting that in place. Along that same vein, the board, the district has issued Regulation 1613 on Disclosure and Review of Applicants' Employment History. Again, it's a pretty boring policy, but we just didn't have it in there. This is part of the board's and the district's ongoing project to fix all of our missing regulations. We have three policies coming through that were part of the Policy Alert. These are updated policies based upon new statutes. And then Policy 2365 on the Acceptable Use of Generative AI Regarding Student Use, Policy 5533 on Student Smoking, and Policy 5701 on Academic Integrity. Note that the Generative AI policy is a brand-new policy regarding regulating that student use. We also have a Policy 2314 on Academic Placement. This clarifies that the district will not limit the number of AP or honors classes that a student can take at one time, and it's being adopted at the same time as the expectation the administration would be adopting a regulation that would put in place academic counseling for students who are taking over a certain number of those courses to ensure their overall well-being. Also up for first read is Policy 8600, Transportation. And this was a pretty spicy one from a couple of years ago. This change is actually just memorializing the policy that is presently in place, which is to say, courtesy transportation that is provided for students from pre-K through fifth grade of 1.25 miles and greater. So no change is being made to transportation policy, it's just actually being written down tonight. There were a number of additional policies that were reviewed in the policy meeting and may come forward on a future date, and as always, you can review the minutes for those. I stand for questions.
Jeff, yes?
I had a question about Policy 8600 on transportation, as you might have anticipated. You know, right now, the policy says that it'll be 1.25 miles and up for pre-K to five, but is that subject to like further review and revision in the next month, between the second read? Because like, you know, as we know, and like, the public might have gotten some inkling of that, like, you know, there is a, we, I don't think that we can sustain, like, in '26, '27, like, pre-K courtesy busing. I think, we all know we have a very bad budget situation. We all know that our transportation system hasn't worked so well. We all know we have like probably a net gain of 200 riders for '25, '26, and then another 200 for '26, '27. So you've got budget pressure, you've got a lot of transportation pressure, and I think it, not every, it might not be a unanimous decision, reasonable people can disagree, but like, I don't think we can sustain pre-K busing. Like, is that like going to be subject to more discussion?
Well, so definitely, as you know, there've been conversations in committee about that, and I think it was also referred to be considered in the broader sense in the Rutgers Implementation Committee as we look at triple-I overall. And there's been discussion about having discussion, I think, maybe in FFT, with the Director of Preschool Services regarding, looking at what preschool is right now, how assignment may change in the next, in the upcoming school year, transportation trends, et cetera. Obviously, with regard to our Bylaw 0131 on policies, if we were to look at this again for second read, it would revert back to a new first read. So the policy as is is going to be approved tonight, or go up to vote tonight for approval as a first read, come back around for approval next month as a second read, and at that point, would be adopted as our current policy. And our policies, of course, are always open to continual review.
Yeah, and my suggestion is to continue to have those conversations, because the data isn't clear, and a lot of board members have a lot of questions, and we'll be discussing all of our first-read policies again next month. Look how long it took us to get this, to get the AI policy to where we are. I feel like if we had just used AI, maybe it could have gone a little faster. But no, it's just, it's, you know, it's a process, so I, I don't know what our FFT Chair, I'm assuming he has it on the agenda for July, but also, I want to use this opportunity, thank you, I'm FFT Chair, I want to use this opportunity to remind the community that every year, they need to apply for transportation. Just because you got it last year doesn't mean you just automatically get a pass again, and that's because you just need to apply every year. It doesn't mean you're not, you don't qualify. And so it's good to have this mile mark memorialized in our policy, because people do, believe it or not, look at our policies and try to find information. And I do think it's important for the district to do their due diligence and send reminders to parents, as I'm sure you and our comms director will do throughout the summer, but a lot of new residents come and they just don't know what they're supposed to do to get transportation. And then we get emails saying, wait, I'm 1.25 miles, but where's my bus pass? So we want to make sure that parents and caregivers have that information.
Just a quick reminder, we are onboarding a new Director of Transportation as well, starting July 1.
Great, thanks. Okay, can we move on to Personnel? And then it will be FFT.
Sorry, I didn't mean to just pass up my, I thought
Sorry, I didn't mean to just pass up my, I thought you were asking if I had any follow-ups to Deirdre's. I was like, no, I'm ready for bed, but, uh. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, June 23rd, at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Board Members Kapadia, Saket Gabel, and myself, along with Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Mr. Adedoyen. As usual, much of what was discussed is confidential. However, you can read the public-facing minutes on the district website. I'm just going to keep mine really brief. We've, we've had a long evening. The first thing I want to call out on the Personnel Resolution is that we have a new Director of Guidance starting, I believe it's July 1st, which would be next week. Already? Wow, that's amazing. I know that, you know, since last year, a lot of the community, a lot of the students have come out and spoken out about it. And for those that have sat on Personnel with me for, over the past year, you know, it's, we've had a lot of discussions around it. So I'm happy to see that the position has been filled. As of Monday's meeting, all nurse and signs vacancies are filled, and there's only one math opening at CHS, highlighting these because these have typically been hard-to-fill positions in recent years. I was going to talk a little bit about the over, an overview of the transfer process. Mr. Bing reviewed a lot of that in his update. These are fluid, and, you know, I know that HR, during the course of the summer, there may be more resignations that come in, retirements that come in, and so, just noting that these are all fluid. I do want to thank the teachers that have shown up tonight and just acknowledge that the transfers before us are difficult for, for you, for all of the staff, for your school communities, families, and students. You know, it's not easy decisions for, for anyone to be making. That's it. Everything else is on the website. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Next, FFT. Oh, do you have a question or a comment?
I just wanted to recognize Chair Eckert, because you have been continuously advocating for this Director of Guidance. So thank you. Flowed perfectly. The FFT Committee met on June 11th. Before I cover some of my notes, I did just want to recognize Thomas Giglio, our Director of Facilities, who will be stepping down. In my time with Tom, his sincere dedication has always been evident, especially in relation to student health and safety. Every decision Tom made, his first consideration was for the welfare of our students. You know, when I first met Tom, I had, I'd just been elected and put on FFT, and I was super hot to get solar all over our facilities. And Tom said, hold up, we're in the middle of a long-range facilities plan, and we have a lot of considerations. And, you know, as an elected, you know, as an elected official, it was a good lesson because when we're, when we're elected, many of us feel that we have a mandate that we have to fulfill the moment we get sworn in. But when the rubber meets the road, you know, individual initiative does not get things done on this board consensus, and community does. Many people don't see that, but there's a lot that goes behind the scenes. And, and Tom, when I got back on FFT as FFT Chair, the first thing we did was pick up solar, because at this time, it is the right thing to do to save money. But Tom showed me the way, and there's a right way to do things, and Tom always did things the right way. So Tom, you know, c'est la vie. I know he's going to serve some other school very well. As for our meeting, the Committee covered the hot topic, no pun intended, Ritzer, the Ritzer Field revitalization. Four development options are under review as we seek to balance athletic needs, fiscal constraints, and community feedback. For those interested in the scope and cost of those options, please go to the district's website where you can locate FFT's meeting minutes. We also covered the proposed auditorium upgrades for the middle schools and the high school. Details regarding the scope and cost of those improvements can similarly be found in the meeting minutes. Currently, the combined cost of Ritzer revitalization in the auditorium is being estimated to land between nine and 10 million. I also wanted to mention, we continue to explore the purchase of the marching band transportation vehicle. Initial low-cost options were unsuitable. Current focus is on reliable vehicles between 25,000 and 30,000. We look to raise these funds from a range of sources, such as anticipated summer facility rental revenue, district matching funds for booster-raised amounts, and community fundraising. We, of course, spoke about several other items, but for those interested, please refer to the district's website where you can find meeting minutes mentioned earlier. The next FFT meeting will be on July 16th. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can you meet up with partnerships? Do you have a quick update?
All right, well, happy to say that with the Municipal Partners Meeting that we had on Monday, we could have done eight of those meetings during this Board of Ed meeting. So it's, it's one of the benefits of working with a very snappy crew there, but no, all to the good. It was a very pointed agenda to, to ride along with what Bill's been talking about here. It was around the scheduling of the meetings for the Board of SMD projects that I'll have to go into consideration, scheduling, the logistics. And also formally, the, what we're trying to schedule in is the Town Hall that Mr. Bing will lead as well, of a way to face the public in terms of what, every, all the considerations for Ritzer. All with the goal of getting ourselves to a, to a vote, and then to a, the Board of School Estuary meeting, that also includes Ritzer and the auditorium projects, all with the goal of maximum transparency. So when, as we get these dates formalized, we will make sure they're communicated to the public so everyone can attend and know all the sequences of order of the operations in terms of to get to where we need to get to. Nothing wants to be rushed, but we do want to do it exponentially, since it's been talked about for a while. The other secondary point that we talked about was improving and upgrading the crosswalk and the safety at the Valley-Parker intersection by Columbia High School, which conclude a number of ideas of flashing signs with lights, or part of the bike lane improvement plan that's in coordination with the county. Unfortunately, we've had a few too many accidents with students trying to cross that area, so that's one of the topic areas that we covered. But the, the flavor of the, of the meeting was around the scheduling of the Bose projects. Any questions?
No questions? Okay, great. Thank you. Saket Gabel?
All right, so the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on June 9th at 6:30 PM with all members present. We discussed progress and updates related to the district goals, including the following highlights. Underneath Goal 1, Dr. Gilbert shared a presentation on the work of the Uplift Team to encourage more middle school student participation in higher-level math classes. We also heard about the supports for students in middle school math classes next year. Dr. Gilbert also presented CHS data on opportunity gaps, course failures, and risk ratios, and their review process of that data. And the District PED Committee has been meeting and has narrowed the focus and structure, structure for next year based on teacher feedback. Within Goal 2, we heard about the work that continues around Freshman Academy, and we were updated on the, how the final absenteeism data will be available by August, but progress is evident so far across schools. We discussed Policy 2314, as mentioned by Board Member Meyer, and we received key updates to the CHS scheduling process, which remains on track with schedules 90% complete. I want to echo Board Member Eckert's acknowledgement that we are voting to approve the hiring of a new Director of Guidance tonight, and extend gratitude to our lead counselors and staff who have stepped up to keep things moving during this vacancy. We discussed the district's plans to support students during the transition from pre-K to kindergarten, and that's about it. All the other notes are available online.
Any questions? No? Thank you. Okay, we are now to the, sorry, what? Oh, action portion of the meeting. Are there any severs? No? Yeah? Oh, sorry.
Special Services, that's okay.
Yes, go on ahead.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the Special Services Committee met on June 12th from 6:30 to 8 with all members present. We begin, as we always do, as acknowledged earlier, with our CPAC meeting with President Beth Cosentino. And this month, we discussed communication structures, chain of command, training and accountability measures that are in place for ensuring accommodations happen in general education settings and paraprofessionals, including concerns and new assignment invading structures as we move into next year. We also, in support of our goal around community and family engagement, discussed how to share findings from the Special Education Experience Survey. Thank you to all of the parents and caregivers who took that survey. We want to also combine it with other data that has been collected throughout the year to create a presentation for the public and the board to highlight the key actions that have been taken, the lessons they have learned, and how this information will guide planning for next full year. In support of our committee goal 1.4 around funds and educational resources, we discuss the district's ongoing efforts to fill vacancies internally when possible while continuing to recruit for key roles. We talked specifically about the two BCBA roles. One seems to be hired and moving forward, and then the additional CST member. We also talked about maintaining our ICRS sections at all elementary schools, which is emphasized to avoid transferring students. Additionally, the expanded Effective School Solutions Contract will include sums for the '25, '26 school year, and this was noted as a fiscal win that freed up resources for other needs. We also did an end-of-year data review, where the committee reviewed data that was compiled by the department that included classifications, placements, paraprofessional usage, and out-of-district trends. And this is being cross-referenced with Dr. Gilbert's wonderful risk ratio analysis so that we can better understand racial disparities in classifications and placements. And these efforts are part of a broader, ongoing effort to analyze programming needs and inform planning and decision-making so we can best support all students. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 10th, and a full recap of this meeting is available on the website, and the floor is open to any colleagues with questions. Thank you so much.
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Chair. Appreciate your patience. Okay, so next is action portion, and our first VP is?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm going to ask to sever 4827.
Well, I was just going to ask whether or not you'd ask for any severs, so.
Yeah.
Action items, 4815 through 4827, you'd like 4827 severed?
Yes, thank you.
And, and then we have the hand carries, 4828 A through E.
Yes. So do we want to do the other ones first? For the severer? Yeah, so we'll do the, all the others now.
Sure, okay. So all of the action items minus 4827 are now up for Board Member vote. I'll do a roll call. Board Member Bennett? Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Saket Gabel?
Yes.
All right, we have, the eyes have it.
Okay, great.
So will there be discussion about action item 4827?
He's going to read.
Yes, please. Do you want a second and such, or are we, are we up? Are we good?
We're good to go.
I think we're good, yeah.
Right. So I, as Board President Duval Wilson mentioned, we're very pleased to be having a resolution this year recognizing Pride Month, and we have a great resolution, it's a big, beautiful resolution. We're not, we're not going to read the whole thing in, but I wanted to read a, an abridged version for the record and for the community tonight. Resolution 4827, whereas the South Orange-Mapplewood School District has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and asexual community, along with allies, the SOMSD District is committed to supporting dignity, equity, and visibility for all people in the community. And whereas the SOMSD community reaffirms enforcing anti-discrimination policies that protect students and staff regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, we are committed to ensuring that LGBTQIA+ identities and histories are accurately and meaningfully reflected in our curriculum, school libraries, and classroom discussions in accordance with the New Jersey LGBTQ+ inclusive curriculum law. And whereas the district will continue to support LGBTQIA+ students through student-led affinity groups, professional development for staff, and visible affirmations of support. Therefore, be it resolved, the South Orange-Mapplewood School District does hereby declare and invite the members of our community to continue to celebrate Pride Month and reflect on ways we all can live and work together throughout the year with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding.
Thank you. Are we all ready to vote? Okay, great.
All right, I'll proceed with the vote then. Board Member Saket Gabel?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
All right.
Great, thank you, everyone. And next, we have hand carries.
So we wanted to separate the hand carries as well. I thought the hand carries were in the first round. Yeah, they were in the first round. Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Go ahead. Cut that over. All right, good. So now, it's just the second public speaks. Do we have any things signed up? So the, is Howard Fisher on? Keith, the other person ended up just emailing, so.
Howard Fisher is no longer on.
No longer on, okay. If it's, if it's just, then, yep, we, we got you, we got you. So Jane, come on up, Ms. Conrad. And Jonathan, right?
There it is, okay. So, thank you for letting me address you again. This will be short, and all pictures, pretty much. It's just part two, and consider what you have before you throw it away. And this, the first one was soil, this is trees. And I do want to leave you all these pictures, because I have them because I've been spending a lot of time weeding and doing things like that on the field. You may have your own pictures, but this, as you know, it's a, it's a panorama of Ritzer. And I would say, you know, this is a view that money can't buy because of the mature trees in it. And if you move just a little to the side, this is the lunch tree, one of the few that are remaining along the side of the building, very important to a lot of kids. And also, holding back a certain amount of stormwater there. Since 2019, we lost a tree the same size, you know, up this side. And if anything, you need more on this side, and that would help, I think, with some of the huge amount of water that comes down there. Moving around, this is facing Valley Street, there's a line of trees, about eight or 10. And I took these pictures because I noticed how important the shade is on them, especially in the summer. And that also affects soil quality and the comfort of anybody, you know, playing on those fields. And I was alarmed to see, actually, that both that, what I call the picnic tree, and these Valley Street trees don't seem to be preserved in the plans that I've seen. At least, there's construction so close to their roots, or they're within the zone of disturbance, that I don't think they would survive. And I just, I urge you to really look at that and, you know, consider. This is this huge tree over on Hickson Street. This is the pole with the Project Adventure zip line arriving to it. Again, Plan C and D pass within two feet of the trunk of this tree, it won't make it. This is looking down, paralleling Hickson. This is a winding path right now. The plan, as I understand it, for C and D anyway, is to straighten it and move it more into the trees. Down here are the Project Adventure low ropes that Plan C and D would take over that space, which you got to have some kind of plan. If you want people to use the high ropes, they got to practice first on the low ropes. This is also some visitors to the field, close up on the low ropes there. Dear, you would lose this big tree right here.
I just want to let you know you're at time, but I want to let you finish showing us the picture.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll wind it up quickly. I just included, this is West Orange. West Orange has a field that is exactly the same size as Ritzer Field. It's like 3.38 or 5.8 or something acres. No trees. I urge you just to go look at it. It's got a soccer field on it and also a ball field. And, you know, I think the oldest high school in New Jersey deserves a setting like that first picture that I showed you with the mature trees around it. Please try to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, you would be the final one, since no one else has officially signed up. You need to sign up in order to, yes.
Good evening. I'll be really quick. I just, I received an email from Mr. Bauer this week saying that next year, band is going to be the largest that it's ever been. And I, in hearing the FFT update this evening, I hear that we can't find $25,000 to $30,000 for a band vehicle for a very large program, but we can spend $6 million on plastic for Ritzer. I just wanted to point out that juxtaposition. And in relation to Parker and Valley, Mr. Kapadia, don't forget to check the crash map for Hickson and Valley. The data gets split in half because half the intersection is in Maplewood and half of it is in South Orange. So whoever responds is who takes the data, but it's, it's constant. And, and unfortunately, it happens a lot as school is letting out, and it scares me to death. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I have to, I have to let him? Sorry, I have to, I have to let him speak now, I'm sorry. We're not supposed to, don't wanna get in trouble. Please state your name again, and, and town, and this is the final public speaks of the evening. Just wanna let everyone know. Thank you.
Ben Vitale, South Orange. Glad to see the board working efficiently and courteously together. Just two quick things, three quick things. Wanted to respond earlier to the comment that we're gonna move Ritzer Field and our facilities into the 21st century. I want you to consider the idea that you're actually moving them into the 20th century from the 19th century. You know, the 20th century is a time when we push nature out of the way with engineering, and only in the last couple of years, since the district has decided to build more turf, have we learned so much about microplastics and so on. I think in the 21st century, we're realizing that we can't always just push nature out of the way, and sometimes we have to work with nature. Just briefly then, also, more generally about the environmental commitments of the district. You know, I think our school district may, in some ways, probably because state policies haven't caught up, may be behind on its commitments to the environment. You know, climate change is a massive issue. The district has, what, $190 million budget, far larger than the county or, sorry, the municipal budgets in town. We've got a $10 million-plus transportation budget, we've got a $3 million facilities budget, glad to hear we're gonna work on solar, or sorry, utilities. How many in facilities, you know, it's a big deal. So, you know, we're talking about transportation, for example, and we hear about how it's important to optimize the number, the time spent on the bus and the number of miles, and that's absolutely true, but I think a first-class part of those decisions needs to be, you know, the amount of carbon that those buses are emitting, the amount of miles that they're driving, and I, I think the district needs maybe to pay attention a little bit more to that. And then very quickly, on the other side of refining the strategy, I'm sitting over here by this noisy air conditioner, so it's hard to hear, but when you're talking about beta testing, will the consultant backtest these new ideas about this variable, which sounded like a very good idea to me, by the way, to just see what the consequences are? I, I hope they can do that.
Thank you. That concludes public speaks. We're now moving to the new business portion of the meeting. Are there any new business items? And reminder that they are, new business items are things that require immediate attention and a vote tonight. No? Great. Okay, so I will now announce our future meetings. The Board of Education will meet again in public session on Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025, at 6:30 PM for our retreat. Action will not be taken. And then again on Thursday, the next night, July 24th, at 6:30 PM in public session for our regular board meeting, action will be taken. Mr. Moody, I would now like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting on Thursday, June 26th, at 10:46 PM. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Eckert. All in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.